I'm just, I'm in full mouthed straight away for two days. I'm out. Friday or Monday, that's all I get. I'll catch you tomorrow. I'm in Chicago. I'm fine on Friday mornings. I'm taking the road. I'm reaching 25% of the property. Yeah. The children are there. Mine's been a good update. You're on my side. Service. I work for us here. We're trying to solve this problem. Why not? I'm just, I'm in full mouthed straight away for two days. I'm out. No, like you have Friday. Friday or Monday, that's all I get. I'll catch you tomorrow. I'm in Chicago. I'm fine on Friday mornings. I'm taking the road. I'm reaching 25% of the property. Yeah. This is what it's on hard application. It's not your world. For a fight. We're right up. Before you know it. Which is just a two. We're going to talk. Well, I've been very excited. Mine's been a good update. I'm just, I'm in full mouthed straight away for two days. I'm out. No, like you have Friday. Friday or Monday, that's all I get. I'll catch you tomorrow. I'm in Chicago. I'm fine on Friday mornings. I'm taking the road. I'm reaching 25% of the property. So you can call me. Yeah. This is what it's on hard application. It's not your world. For a fight. For them to. We're right up. Before you know it. Which is just a two. We're going to talk. We're going to talk. I'm just, I'm in full mouthed straight away for two days. I'm out. No, like you have Friday. Friday or Monday, that's all I get. I'll catch you tomorrow. I'm in Chicago. I'm fine on Friday mornings. I'm taking the road. I'm reaching 25% of the property. So you can call me. Yeah. This is what it's on hard application. It's not your world. For a fight. For them to. We're right up. Before you know it. Which is just a two. We're going to talk. We're going to talk. Yeah. At least the dealer. Interesting.
Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April the 15th. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the pleasure of the evening?
I would like to introduce to you the high United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. Our first item of business is the opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody here who wishes to raise an issue, has a question or a comment for the board about something that is not on the agenda? Okay, now we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is possible approval of resolution number 152025. So let me introduce that. Before the board this evening is proposed resolution number 152025. This resolution would recognize Alyssa Nikter on achieving her Girl Scout Gold Award. By way of background information, Ms. Nikter appeared before the board at the February 6th, 2024 meeting to present her project proposal. The proposal consisted of painting the house numbers on the curb in front of her, of homes in her neighborhood to aid emergency personnel in locating the properties. The township was recently contacted by the Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania to inform us that Ms. Nikter completed the requirements for her Girl Scout Gold Award and will be recognized at an event on May 17th, 2025. This resolution recognizes Ms. Nikter's achievement. So in terms of the process, Alyssa, do you want to say a few words about your project and inform the board how it went? But if everybody was cooperative in our township with you?
Hi, my name is Alyssa Nikter. As stated, I recently received my Gold Award for Girl Scouting, which is the highest award you can receive. My project focused on neighborhood safety, so I had two parts to it. The first part was painting home numbers on the curbs of each household so that any emergency responders such as firemen, policemen, ambulances can better locate the address as they may be dimly lit, covered by a bush, fading, or completely missing from a mailbox. So I had 46 homes in my neighborhood, each of which I spray painted the house number on the curb of. And then the second part of my project, I gave neighborhood safety presentations to younger children and younger Girl Scouts going over things such as fire hydrant rules, house safety, vacation protocols, et cetera, et cetera. And overall, I received 112 hours of work.
Excellent. Well done.
Thank you.
So, so Boyd, what I'd like to hear now is take a vote on hopefully approving the resolution and then I'm going to go up there and read it out and present it to Alyssa. So I will make a motion to approve resolution number 152025. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, John. All in favor, oh, is there any public comment on the motion?
I'd just like to say one thing. I'm an Eagle Scout, so I appreciate what it took for you to get to where you're at. Now, neither did you do this project, but you did a lot more before you did this project to get to where you're at. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
A little quitter resident too.
Thank you.
Is there any, any public comment on the motion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes, so I'm going to come up now and read it. So resolution number 152025, a resolution to West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors, Chesapeake County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing Alyssa Nikter for achieving her Girl Scout Gold Award. Whereas Alyssa Nikter presented a proposal for a Girl Scout Gold Award project to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors at a meeting held on February 6th, 2024. And whereas the project consisted of painting address numbers on the curbs in front of houses in her neighborhood in order to aid emergency personnel. And whereas the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors unanimously supported her project proposal. And whereas Ms. Nikter recently completed the requirements for her Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the highest award in Girl Scouting, only being bestowed on 5.4% of all eligible Girl Scouts. And whereas Ms. Nikter will be recognized at the annual Girl Scout Gold Award ceremony on May 17th, 2025. And whereas the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors desires to recognize Ms. Nikter for this momentous achievement, now therefore be it resolved that the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors congratulates Alyssa Nikter on achieving her Girl Scout Award and commands her on the service of the community, resolved and adopted the 15th day of April, 2025. So congratulations. Well done. Alyssa, do you want to take any pictures in front of our logo? There's always one outside to the back, so up to you. Okay, next on the agenda is item number five, which is discussion on applications. ZHB, before the zoning hearing board, ZHB application number seven, 2025, Ellis Lane and Strasburg Road. And ZHB application number eight, 2025, West Town Road. Shelby, would you like to introduce these, please?
Yes, so before the Board of Supervisors this evening, our two applications before the zoning hearing board. The first is application number seven dash 2025 for 20 Ellis Lane and 1240 Strasburg Road. The applicant is seeking relief from section 8429 E2 and 8416 C4 of the Township zoning ordinance. A redevelopment of the site consisting of 14 townhomes is proposed. The existing single-family detached dwelling units would remain, but there are two currently. However, the existing barn would be demolished. Please be advised that the property is located in the C4 district and townhome use is permitted by right. The single-family detached dwelling units are existing nonconformities. For some background, the applicant previously obtained relief from the zoning hearing board in 2024. This approval allowed the existing three parking spaces within the required 100-foot setback for the multifamily dwelling units to remain. A dimensional variance from section 8416 C4 was also granted to permit the development on a tract of less than three acres. In the current variants that they're seeking, they are seeking a variance from 8429 E2 to permit parking for a proposed multifamily use within the 100-foot setback from Ellis Lane. And the variance from 8416 C4 to permit townhomes to be at a maximum height of 35 feet or 30 feet is permitted. The application was reviewed by the planning commission after meeting on April 8th. But it was recommended that the board remain neutral on the application by a vote of eight to one. Please be advised that the applicant will still need to go through the subdivision and land development process and the application has not been submitted. The second application.
Should we go with this one first?
We, we absolutely can.
Okay, is there anybody here? Yeah, there's the applicant here. Hi, Lou.
Good evening. I stole my thunder.
Shelby, good job.
Thank you.
So now that you've set forth while we're here, I'd just like to point out the area where the parking spaces are in the 100-foot setback. Ted, go introduce yourself and maybe just go and point at the screen.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Awesome. I'm Ted Worrell. We have met before, last year about this time. I'm the principal of Bestwell Real Estate and partnership with Troubled House here for this project. So the parking spaces we're referencing are going to be to the right side of the pack of four townhomes. There's, there's actually a little, I think it's blue color, sitting in a parking space that technically sits by maybe eight or 10 feet into, thank you, Brian, into the 100-foot setback.
Oh, I see.
It's a big pattern.
It's very similar to the relief that was granted by the zoning board last year. The encouragement into the one, 100-foot setback is minimal. And it's only a false couple. I think it involves four parking spaces if I'm not mistaken. And it's a setback from which we're there.
It's from.
From Alice.
So if, if the board's okay, I'll give just a few seconds here on kind of an update of where we're at, what's changed since the last time, last time we met. So initially, the project was for 20 Ellis Lanes. We went through the variances process, presented to the zoning hearing board. We obtained that variance for having less than three acres permitted in the C4. Through that process, we got to go, got to note the neighbors at 1240 East Strasburg. And, you know, through working with them, they were open to including their parcel, which would eliminate the need for the variance that we went and got. But, you know, and we could include that in our project, basically bring into what we thought, thought and felt was full conformance with the code. Since then, the only thing that has changed is the inclusion of that parcel. The things that we talked about before with respect to the barn, which, you know, 20 Ellis Lanes are historic properties, so the historic house is remaining. There'll be interior renovations, most of the exterior is in remarkably great shape. It's been same, same family for a long time. We've got rendering, working with the Historic Commission for pillars to the entrances. We've got a meeting with them coming up to go over naming conventions, so we're working, we're going to be working hand in hand with them. A lot of things to honor the site. And what's changed since then with the barn specifically is we're actually going to incorporate some of the barns down into ruins of the stormwater facility right here. So that was kind of another way we thought, let's get creative, let's kind of keep a little, you know, a wall so that on Ellis Lane, you still see some of that. It's incorporating the stormwater system. And, you know, you kind of, it's still on the site. We may end up doing a plaque or something like that to also go over some of the history on the site. Myself, you know, I'm local, I grew up in West Ocean, grew up going to the East Ocean Fair right there. So this is a project that's very near and dear to me. I think a big thanks to Inland, who's done a remarkable job with the site plan. The other thing I'll mention, the landscape plan is much more robust than it was before. We've included a series of berms, and this will, you know, go through land development as well. A series of berms to help, you know, shield's the wrong word, but just make the site, you know, be kind of hidden back there with a lot of larger landscaping on the exterior. So we're very excited about it. We really appreciate the time and, you know, we're looking forward to answering questions and then you can leave my line up.
The other variants that we are seeking before the zoning board, eight variants for the townhouses. The ordinance is sort of, your ordinance has different heights for different townhouses in different districts, which I'm not sure why that is. But the Lake Bucci development, which is on the other side of Route 3, got probably 1,000 feet of this project. That zoning district allows a townhouse of height of 40 feet. And those homes are at 40 feet. This district allows townhomes at 30 feet. And frankly, it's an aesthetic. Could you do 30 feet? We've talked to Ted, said you probably could do 30 feet, but it's not going to be the aesthetic. I don't think that West Ocean would want it that properly, be more flat roof, modernistic style of townhouse. Not really fitting in with the area around it. But that is the other request, to go from a minimum of 30 feet to a minimum of, or to a maximum, I should say maximum of 30 feet to a maximum of 35 feet. Again, the other advantage that we would have in doing that is by showing iron, I don't fully understand the engineering of this or engineer, we'll later explain that, but it involves like grading lesser disturbance to more, just smaller, shorter. Okay? That's that.
Okay, so Boyd, do you have any questions? Or? These two gentlemen?
I have a question. Is there a spring house on the property?
No. No, it didn't come up. Thank you.
The planning commissioner was brought up by a member of the Historical Commission who intended that the house that you're going to retain, this one right here, was the formerly owned by a great-grandfather, I believe it was, or a great-grandmother.
I thought it was a relative. We're going to get the full history this month of the Historic Commission.
Are you guys going to do any historical research into this building? Is maybe put a placard up or something in that neighborhood?
Exactly, yeah, we'd like to with work with the Historic Commission. I mean, what I can tell you is there's an attic in that house that if you lift the floorboards up, that's where the slaves would stay as they were fleeing south on, as part of the Underground Railroad. So we're looking to find ways to honor that. There was, the history is, there would be a candle burning in the window and that would signify if someone was there or not. So we're trying to get creative and working with them.
You guys have some kind of plaque or something like that?
Agreed.
Find what it is?
Yeah, agreed.
I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
And you had the other thing that we discussed at that side, once, but that's an agenda addressed through the subdivision and land development process.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, exactly.
So the single, two existing homes that are historic, are they going to be bought by individuals? Or is that going to be like a clubhouse with the purpose of those two existing historic homes?
Sure, great question. So the, the house 20 Ellis Lane is the only one that's historic, but both of them will be resold as part of, as part of HOA. So they'll be, but all the ground will be taken care of under that HOA as well, so.
Okay.
You know, law and snow, stormwater, things like that.
So you're going to merge the two lots under the subdivision land development process?
Correct.
Single lot, all HOA, no separate?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
Where's the setback? Like where's the line?
So it was from Ellis Lane, straight down to those two parking spots on that last townhouse, or three, you think Lou said?
Yeah, and I will make the note, we have 67 spaces and the code requires 35. So we're, you know, just from practicality, you know, Inland obviously knows exactly, people have friends or things like that. So there, it's more just because they more than likely will be used by those residents that we're seeking the variance.
When you have to, we're planning a structure, structure.
So fingers crossed, we're submitting land development this week. And then, however, all that process is typically, best case scenario, nine months. So I think we're breaking ground this year will be beautiful, more than likely, you know, January, but somewhere in that timeframe.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in attendance who has a question about this development? Okay, so Boyd, we need to make a decision as to whether we support, whether we remain neutral on the request that will be before the zoning hearing board for these two variances that are being sold. So anyone got an opinion on that?
I'm in motion that we be neutral.
Do we need a motion? Go on, now.
If you're saying neutral, you cannot.
Is there any, is there any different from a neutral position? Very good, well, good luck at the zoning hearing board, see you this month, right? You're going to go, so?
Yep, yeah, we're off for 4/28, which is my birthday, so. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, Shelby, on to the second one.
The second application, which Mr. Colagreka was here for as well, is application number eight dash 2025 for 328 West Town Road and 721 739 East Neale Street. This is going to be the Kia Westchester. The applicant is seeking relief from section 8438B6, 8438B7, and 8438B11 of the Township zoning ordinance as a part of a planned redevelopment of the property on East Neale Street. The existing Kia Westchester facility is located on West Town Road and was recently redeveloped. The future land development application would propose consolidating the properties, expanding the existing building at 739 East Neale Street and replacing the building at 721 East Neale Street. The variance from section 8438B6 would be to permit a side yard setback for the new building of less than 30 feet. The existing building, which is the old Bimmer Works Building at 721 East Neale Street, is an existing nonconformity in the terms of the side yard setback. The variance in section 8438B7 would be to permit green space, the green space area of less than 30%. The development would propose to have a green space of 22.83%. And the variance from section 8438B11 would be to permit a maximum paved surface exceeding 60%. The proposed development is having a paved surface area of 62%. As with the previous application, the planning commissioner reviewed this application at their April 8th meeting where it was recommended unanimously that the board remain neutral. The planning commission did recommend that the applicant look at the possibility of utilizing green slash impervious parking options to avoid needing the variance from section 8438B11. The applicants did reach out to Brian and Brian had forwarded me that email this morning regarding the question of grass pavers for paved surface area. I have not done the review for that yet, but intend to discuss with the applicant tomorrow. So just wanted to let everyone know that.
So you've not made any determinations of whether those grass pavers count towards the green space, is that correct?
Correct.
Does the applicant, please, do you want to say if you're here?
Shelby, thank you. Jim Sappala, with the year tonight, but he was summoned to New York for an emergency Kia meeting with everything that's going on with the economy. So I'm going, I'm going to be Jim Sappala for a little bit tonight. I can't do commercials like he does. The, as Shelby pointed out, you see Jim's existing car dealership, which was built last year. We went through the land development proposal. The building on the corner there is going to stay where it is. He's going to use that for offices, corporate purposes. And then the new building in the back will be a service area. The, we can start with the coverage issues, they've been explained. If, if the porous, and Jim's fine with that, he's fine with doing grass pavers, he's fine with that recommendation. If the determination is that they don't constitute impervious coverage, then we don't need the variance. If, because he can do, he can come down to the 60% number, which is the ordinance requirement, by doing those grass pavers. And of course, or we would need a variance to go to 62%. And he would be fine with the condition, and he would explain this to the zoning board, that if they wanted to impose a condition, that he do the grass pavers, that's fine too. So this is just like a legalistic dance as to whether you need the variance in the first place. If you do need it, what an appropriate condition be that 2% of the site be paved, if that's the right word, with these porous grass pavers. The setback variance relief that is needed, and Joe Rosella can speak more of the dimensions on this, our engineer. The building that's coming down right now, or that will come down, is actually closer to the abutting property lines than the one Jim is proposing. The ordinance says that you have to have a side yard of less than 30 feet. His would be eight feet from the north, 14 feet from the west. He's talked to the abutting property owner, the abutting property owners, has no concern. Frankly, it's, it's, you could probably see why that what's in the back there is, you know, I think Jim's going to be, you know, fixing up the neighborhood here a little bit with this new proposed building. One of the benefits of the plan, and we'll get into this when we come back for land development, right now there are four free-flowing access points on the East Neale Street. That'll be consolidated into one access point, so you'll be eliminating three relatively uncontrolled access points to the properties, so I think that's an advantage. And that's essentially it. I mean, that's the, that's the plan, the setback relief and the paved relief, which is correlated to green area as well. So if you have any questions from an engineering perspective, joke me answering, like, I can't answer any operational questions, but I think you know what the car dealership does.
Thanks, Lou. Does the board have questions?
Yeah, I have just a quick couple of questions. This area you hear, this is existing, is it not?
Yes, everything on the north side of the site where the existing dealership is, is existing.
Yeah, so that's to the rear of the existing building, right?
Yes, that's.
Why do you have it arranged so that you have three parking spaces there with one in the middle? You know, not, you're not able to move in and out of it. And the way you have it now is there's actually two rows back-to-back parking. I would imagine you would retain that.
Yes, we would retain that. Jim uses that for his inventory storage, so it's a controlled situation. It's not for the employee parking, it's just really for his vehicles.
Interesting. But what do you have it now, you just have, you have two sets of rows back-to-back parking in this rear area here? But anyway, it just seemed like an odd way to change things around, I don't know what you're trying to accomplish there. But, you know, as far as reducing the space from 62% to 60%, would he also consider just eliminating some of these impervious areas there to make some more green space? We're talking about basically a rather small change here. You know, what's more, is that good?
Well, before you answer that, I actually want to build on that, because I am a little confused, because the impervious paved surface requirement is 60% here at 62. We've talked about green parking spaces to try to, you know, address that situation. But the actual green space, the landscaped area is only 22% versus a requirement of 30. So just getting the paved area in conformance with the 60 doesn't solve the green space, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So eight over 22, you go from 22 to 30, that's eight over 22. That's pretty close to 30% more green space would be required to actually meet the existing zoning requirement, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So I don't believe the planning commission did discuss that with you.
I was not present at that meeting and I believe that it was touched on briefly, I don't know how much they got into it.
Yeah, so my question is, what's the hardship in not, why is there a hardship in meeting the green space requirement?
In talking with Jim, the hardship is the operations of his business and utilization of the site for the inventory and comparing it to the other car dealerships. One of the important parts to note in the redevelopment is, is that in the multi, in the MPD district, the two parcels that we're consolidating. Yeah, so, my question is, what's the hardship in not, why is there a hardship in meeting the green space requirement?
In talking with Jim, the, the hardship is, uh, the operations of his business and utilization of the site, uh, for the inventory and comparing it to the other car dealerships. Uh, one of the important parts to note in the redevelopment is, is that in the multi, in the MPD district, the, the two parcels that we're consolidating currently fall under the I-three requirements of the zoning district whereby we would meet the, uh, the, the green and paved area requirements. As we develop the site and consolidate it with the auto dealership, we're forced into the I-two, which is a little bit more restrictive. So under the I-three, we would be complying, and under the I-two is where we have the shortcoming. Uh, Jim looked at, uh, the impervious coverage and compared it to the other car dealerships that are on, uh, West Town Park. Uh, and they're synonymous with this type of impervious coverage to facilitate the needs of the business. So, that's the, that's, I don't know whether that's a hardship, or that's the realization as to how we're pursuing development of the site.
As Joe pointed out, I mean, the anomaly about this zoning district is that if we were to do office buildings, we'd be totally compliant. The fact that you're doing a car dealership adds these extra requirements for reasons I'm not entirely sure of. Why would more green area be required for a car dealership than it would be for an office complex or any of the other uses that would be permitted, any industrial uses in the district? Uh, you can see how little green area there is surrounding and other uses in the property, other uses surrounding the property. So, you know, and, and it's no secret, I mean, West Ocean has approved a number of car dealerships. Parking area inventory space to a, to a car dealer is, is golden. And that's one of the reasons that he thought, well, he wasn't sure of the logic between differentiating between a car dealership and any other use in the district. And secondly, he thinks he has a good plan, he thinks he's improving the area, and that's, that's the argument.
Okay. I understand the argument, I sort of like that. Other questions from the board? Is anybody in attendance, have any questions about this application that we got in front of the zoning hearing board? Yes, sir, if you would mind stating your name?
Dan Diskin.
Hi, Dan.
I'm a senior salesman, and actually nothing to do with this, but just having been in a business building dealership court. Can you drive around that proposed building with a fire truck?
I hope so.
I can't tell the scale.
Yeah, that's a good question, no, well.
The fire department will make you that, I think, personally.
I would think that that, uh, proposed building, just like the existing condition, probably not the back, although I'm not, that, that's a good land development issue. But it'll have access, obviously, from the front, the side, uh, of the proposed building, whether that's satisfactory or not, I'm not.
Yeah, I was just, I was gonna, but I wanted to make sure, cause you get a variance for this, and then can't look at it.
Yeah, well, that would have to meet code, so. We'll bring that up. Good point. Thank you, Dan. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay, so board, we're looking at, if there's, anyone has a position they wanna take on this, or just remain neutral for the ZHB?
Well, I think we should also let the zoning hearing board know our concerns about the impervious, uh, coverage here, and recommend that they provide a solution to, uh, reduce the amount of impervious coverage.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Lou. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to agenda item number six, which is a public hearing for conditional use application, number, number one, twenty-twenty-two-five, West Chester University seeking modification of the existing conditional use approval granted on September the fourteenth, twenty-eleven, for a geothermal pump house pursuant to section eighty-four fifty-seven ten C-three of the West Ocean Township zoning ordinance. So I'm gonna read a bit of the background on this, uh, and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Camp to lead us through the process of holding the conditional use hearing itself. So, as I just stated before, the board is a public hearing for conditional use application number one, twenty-twenty-five. The applicant is West Chester University, and it is for the property at one fourteen West Rosedale Avenue. This is the site of the existing geothermal pump house for the university. Conditional use approval was previously granted by the Board of Supervisors for this use on September the fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. A copy of the previous approval was provided in the materials to the board. The applicant is seeking to modify the existing conditional use relief pursuant to section eighty-four fifty-seven ten C-three of the West Ocean Township zoning ordinance in order to alter the existing geothermal pump house to improve its functionality. Acoustical enclosures are proposed as part of the project, and while the application includes a temporary cooling tower with associated noise barriers of twenty-two-five, as noted in the application materials, the applicant's intention with this expansion is to eliminate the need for this temporary cooling tower going forward. The application was reviewed by the planning commission at their meeting on March the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, where it was recommended for approval. This evening's conditional use hearing was advertised in the March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and April seventh, twenty-twenty-five editions of the daily local news, as is required. Additionally, notification was issued to property owners within five hundred feet on March the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and the property was posted on April the second, twenty-twenty-five. So with that, I'm going to turn the procedure over to Ms. Camp to lead us through.
Thank you. And Jim, he'll give you a copy of what he was reading. Um, this is a, conditional use hearing is a special public hearing that only the Board of Supervisors can hold. Um, it is a special zoning approval that is required based on a township zoning ordinance. So as the chairman said, the applicant is West Chester University of Pennsylvania. Property is one fourteen West Rosedale. The board exhibits are as follows. The first one is Board Exhibit One, which is the actual conditional use application. It was dated March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it was hand-delivered to the township on March fifth. Board Exhibit Two, tonight's hearing, had to be advertised in the daily local news for two consecutive weeks. We did that on March thirty-first and April seventh, and I approved a publication for both of Board Exhibit Two. The third exhibit for the board is the affidavit of posting. Property was posted by Shelby Smith on April second, twenty-twenty-five, and a photograph of the posting is attached to the affidavit. The fourth exhibit is an affidavit of mailing, again, completed by Shelby Smith. She affirmed that on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, she provided notice of tonight's hearing to the property owners who are listed on exhibit, um, A-A of the affidavit. And I believe those are people within five hundred feet of the subject property. Um, the fifth exhibit is, this application had to be reviewed by the Township Planning Commission, and that was done at their meeting on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. So the fifth exhibit is those meeting minutes, where the planning commission voted nine to zero to recommend that the board, um, grant approval of this conditional use application. And then the last board exhibit, or two other, excuse me, board exhibit six is the conditional use application that was entered on September fourteenth, twenty-eleven, which allowed the geothermal pump house to be located on a particular property. And finally, an aerial tax map, tax map of the property, I marked as Exhibit B-seven, so the board has, um, a visual of where this property is located. So I will, in a minute, turn this hearing over to the applicant's counsel, Mr. Nagel, but first I wanna ask if there's anybody in the audience who owns or leases property in close proximity that wishes to be recognized as a party. If you are going to do that, I'm gonna ask you to come forward and fill out this form. To be a party means that you can cross-examine the applicant's witnesses, you can present your own evidence to the board, and you have the right to appeal the decision that the board renders to the Court of Common Pleas. So is there anybody that wishes party status, please come forward. Great pleasure, we can fill this out. Don't worry about the top one. Just your name. I do have to go now. Yeah, should you fill it out, please? I have to ask that. You have it, then? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And while they're doing that, Mr. Nagel, do you have any objection to the admission of board exhibits one through seven?
Can you clarify, please, Ms. Camp, what, what B-six is?
It's the supervisor's, uh, original conditional use order dated September fourteenth, twenty-eleven.
No objection.
And I'm sorry, I have a copy for you. That would've been easier?
You said applications, I was sure if you meant application or decision, but I think you meant decision.
Decision.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Just make sure I can read it. Is it Gita?
Yes.
Oh, don't worry about that one. But I do need this, how close are you? Do you think? Okay, so, um, okay. Okay, so, Mr. Nagel, there are three, uh, individuals who have requested party status. The first is Gita Shivde, did I say that right?
Sure.
Eight twenty Church Avenue. She says she's located within five hundred feet. Do you have any objection?
I, I just have to see, I'll look on the satellite map where that, where that is.
We're right behind Science Union, you can see our yard from.
Did you receive a copy of the notice?
Yeah.
No objection.
Okay, you will be admitted.
Could you spell that for me, please?
S-H-I-V-D-E. It's his last name, first name G-E-E-T-A. Second request is Christine Otto David, did I say that right? Um, and she's at eight oh five South New Street, and she said she's around the corner. She is listed as receiving a copy of the notice, which means she's within five hundred feet, approximately.
No objection.
Okay, thank you. And then last is Dan Diskin at eight oh seven Spruce Avenue, again, approximately five hundred feet.
No objection.
He did give notice, okay. So, to be a party, what we're gonna do is, the applicant's going to present their witnesses. After the witness testifies, I'll ask the board if they have any questions, and then I'll turn it over to you if you have questions of the witness. After the applicant presents their entire case, I will then individually call each of you. If you want to present any evidence to the board, you'll be given that opportunity. Okay? Thank you very much. Mr. Nagel, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Brian Nagel, on behalf of West Chester University of the Pennsylvania State System of Higher Education. Uh, little background with this application, as Ms. Camp noted, and as is marked as one of the board exhibits, um, there was a decision rendered approving the existing pump house in two thousand and eleven by this board. In more recent years, the university, in order to, um, properly operate the geothermal system, uh, which, which is, exists for the university's sustainability object, objectives for cooling all the buildings on campus, or a lot of the buildings on campus, um, they've had to install a temporary cooling tower, as I'm sure, uh, some of the neighbors are, are well aware. The purpose of this application is to, this year, obviously, they're going to have to put that temporary tower up, which is going to happen in the next week or two, probably. But in order to avoid having to continue to use the temporary cooling tower, um, there are upgrades required to the pump house itself, to the adjacent to the pump house, by installing a chiller. So the, the goal of this application is to get that chiller modification to the facility approved, so that that permanent, uh, fix can be installed by the university before next year's cooling season. Um, if that happens, then the temporary, uh, cooling tower won't be needed in future years. The, the other thing that we've done and included in the application tonight is to improve the sound, um, barrier around the temporary cooler as compared to what's been there the last few years. So, what you'll hear tonight is that the temporary, uh, cooling tower that's going in this year will have an upgraded sound barrier, so you won't have some of the noise issues that you've had in the past. Um, I think there were readings taken, and they were compliant, but, but still there were at least a few complaints, and that's gonna be improved, um, this year for this cooling season. And then, you'll see in the testimony of our sound expert, that once the permanent chiller is installed for next year, the, uh, noise levels are, are reduced even further, and in all cases, compliant with the township's, uh, noise ordinance. Um, in the, in the process of going through this application, um, looking back at the conditions from the prior decision, there was a declaration that's supposed to be recorded, um, and I didn't find that. I found a, a draft version of that, so we're proposing to do that after the approval of this. And that pertains mainly to, um, when, when the application occurred in two thousand and eleven, the township asked the university to agree not to develop what I'll call the south lawn of the pump house parcel. That would be the open lawn area that's south of the pump house itself. Uh, the university, and, and that lawn, by the way, is permitted to have underground utilities, including geothermal wells, which it does have today. The university did agree to that condition, that condition does exist and was imposed by the decision, which Ms. Camp referenced as B-six. Uh, we still have to record the declaration, um, which was required, and we, I've allocated that, and I'll submit that to Ms. Camp for review, and that can be recorded, uh, in conjunction with, with the approval of the, uh, pump, pump house modification, um, moving forward. That's all I really have for introduction. Obviously, it was noted, the planning commission reviewed the application and recommended unanimously that it be approved. Um, I'll move to my first witness unless the board has any initial questions. I've provided a copy of the applicant's exhibits to the board and the solicitor. I've already given a copy to Mr. Diskin, and I'll provide a copy, I think I have one left, so I'll ask if you, if you could, if you could share one copy, and I'll provide that to you.
Brian, I can share with first, maybe, but I'll hold it.
So the applicant will call Dave McNamara?
Just raise your right hand. He's sort of testimony about the group. I will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be God.
I do.
Can you spell your last name for me? Thank you.
Can you state your full name and your position at the university?
Yes, David McNamara, I'm Senior Associate Vice President of Facilities. I oversee the entire facilities department, which includes operations and maintenance, design, construction, environmental health and safety grounds, and so forth.
And what's your background and experience in doing the job at the university?
Uh, over thirty-five years, I've been involved with facilities and construction, uh, related work. I've been in higher ed the last twenty-five years with increased responsibilities, responsibility, and I've been at the university. And my current position would be two years, next month.
Are you familiar with what I've marked as A-one for identification? I'll just leave the packet up here, if you can look someone out first.
Yes.
You recognize that as the application that you submitted for modification to the pump house?
Correct.
I'm showing you what I've marked A-two for identification, and that's an aerial photograph that includes the area where the pump house is located, correct?
Yes, correct.
And that shows the pump house, which, prior to the two thousand and eleven application, that property was three parcels, it's now consolidated as one single parcel, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that also shows the, uh, south lawn area, the area to the south of the pump house building, which, looking at it, is the lighter colored roof, the southernmost improvement on that parcel, correct?
That is correct.
And so, the university previously agreed that that lawn area below the pump house, to the south of the pump house, would not be further developed, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
What does the pump house do?
Uh, the pump house provides geothermal, uh, water to our campus. We currently have thirteen buildings that are tied into the geothermal pump house. Uh, the pump house was erected roughly fifteen years ago. The pump house was erected roughly 15 years ago to support the university's sustainability initiative, which is one of our core values for the university and part of our strategic plan. The pump house provides heating, water, I said groundwater, to 13 buildings where the water is sent to heat pumps in various locations of the building, which produces either the heating or cooling required from the building, depending on the time of year.
Is it unusual to have a chiller or a cooling tower associated with the geothermal pump house?
It is not unusual for a cooling tower. It helps reject the heat coming back from the, return of water from the pump house or from the building loop, campus loop. Chiller is less common at the, for this type of installation, but it is not unheard of, no.
Is it, and for the last, I guess it's three or four years, the university has put up a temporary cooling tower, I think you call it, right?
Yes, correct.
And that's been to the side of the pump house?
Yes, to the west side of the pump house. Correct.
Are there any issues with that temporary cooling tower that you've used the last few years?
Several. One, it's very expensive for us to operate. As we've talked about previously in this session, it's noisy, and to some people, it's unsightly. So, for us to maintain that over numerous years is problematic for the university, yes.
And in the past years, you had a fence around that temporary chiller cooling tower?
Yes, correct. We've erected a fence to, for aesthetic reasons, and also some noise reduction with purpose, yes.
And you're using the same type of cooling tower this year, correct?
Yes, same model.
How about with regard to sound enclosure?
We've hired an acquisition who we appear from later in this process to, we've hired an architect and acquisition to provide a better temporary barrier around that cooling tower and help mitigate the noise that might have been perceived in previous years. So, they'll elaborate more on that later in the testimony.
But what you're saying is that the sound barrier that's planned for the temporary cooling tower you're installing this year is...
Far superior to what we've done in the past, yes.
Okay. And you're representing to the township that if the, if the permanent solution, the chiller that we're going to talk about in a few minutes, is approved and constructed, and you committed to constructing that before the next cooling season next year, that there'll no longer be a need for the temporary cooling towers, correct?
That is correct, yes.
I'm showing you what I've marked as Exhibit A3. This shows the plan for this year's temporary cooling tower, correct?
Yes, correct. The temporary cooling tower, again, is required to assist us in cooling the wellfield temperatures. Specifically during cooling season, heating season, it's not an issue. We cannot, basically, the issue is we cannot maintain proper wellfield temperatures that the supply sends to the heat pumps on campus. That's why the cooling tower is currently, temporary cooling tower is currently needed. Obviously, as we just stated, if we get the permanent air-cooled chiller, that will resolve us not using the cooling tower going forward.
And associated with the cooling tower is also a 50-watt power pump on the exterior, correct?
That is correct.
And that would be enclosed within the sound?
Yes.
The sound barrier.
The approved, yes, the approved sound partition, yes.
And will the height of that pump be five feet or less?
That is correct.
What can happen if you don't have the cooling tower or the permanent fix, which is the chiller?
If we don't, the issue is with rising temperatures, we need to have between 80 and 85 degrees water going to our building's heat pumps. Currently, we're over that number. And if we do not have a temporary cooling tower, I literally have to take up the four buildings off the loop and provide temporary cooling throughout the summer, which is obviously a catastrophic financial imposition with the university if we have to do that.
Well, wouldn't that also include having to install cooling systems on the exterior of all those buildings?
Correct. I literally have to take four buildings offline within the super block and put in a temporary cooling tower or temporary chiller at each location.
Let's turn to the upgrades to the existing pump house. What needs to be done there for the permanent chiller solution?
We need to install a 500-ton air-cooled chiller, which is proposed on the north side of the building, to basically resolve our issues with the supply water going through the campus loop.
I'm showing you what I've marked as Exhibit A4 for identification. Is that the plan for the pump house upgrade, the permanent pump house upgrade?
Yes, that's correct.
And looking at that plan, the chiller is located on the north side of the pump house, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Not to the, not to the west where the temporary cooling tower is?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you explain a little bit more detail about what you're doing there?
Yes, so, we're installing a permanent, our proposal is to install a permanent 500-ton air-cooled chiller, which will help cool the wellfield water much better than the temporary cooling towers. So, the chiller would be installed and supply and return lines coming from the loop across Rosedale Avenue. Part of the water would be sent to the chiller, it'd be cooled, and it would be put right back in the loop, going back to service campus. So, basically, we basically cool the water and supplement the wellfields with much cooler water going back to the supply line through each of the heat pumps in the 13 buildings on the loop.
And that involves minimal addition of new impermeable copper?
Yes, correct.
Under 500 square feet?
Yes, or, which was verified by our civil engineer that we hired.
So, that's below the groundwater management threshold for township ordinance?
That is correct.
And have you maintained adequate circulation for pedestrian and vehicle access, including parking at the site, notwithstanding the upgrade that you're showing on A4?
Yes, that's correct. Essentially, we'll, the existing parking lot will mostly look like it does now.
And you'll obtain whatever other approvals from the township that are necessary, whether it be a building permit or a green permit or whatever that might be. If it's L and I, we do the only permit. Township, if there's land, it'll require it.
Yes, whatever.
Rule of team, whatever that is.
Yes, whatever we need to do for township approval, we will, we should do that, yes.
Assuming this is, this permanent, this conditional use application is approved, when would you be install, planning to install the permanent chiller?
The work would start this fall, and the chiller would be delivered, and it would be installed by next March.
By next March?
Yes.
Once the new chiller is installed by next March, as you said, does that eliminate the need for cooling tower?
It does, yes.
Indefinitely?
I would say it's good for plus or minus 10 years.
So, to the extent you would need additional upgrades to the pump house, you're not foreseeing anything in the next decade at least that would require any additional modifications to the pump house?
That's correct. Unless there's, the university must presume putting additional buildings on the system. As long as the system stays as it is now for 13 buildings, we don't foresee any other modifications to the pump house at this point.
If there are further modifications, you would file another conditional use application?
That's correct.
See to whatever might be needed.
That's correct, yes.
Is there also sound attenuation planned for the new chiller?
Yes. And again, our acquisition will be testifying later in this hearing to go over the details of those sound attenuation we're putting in to meet the west coast sound ordinance.
And the yellow that you see on the exterior, when obviously, there's the yellow inside?
That's the chiller.
That's the chiller itself. And then there's some white, and then there's a yellow that looks like wall or something outside. Is that structural wall?
It is, yes.
And how tall is that?
15 feet.
Brian, can I ask a...
Bob, because you were pointing it out. Is the chiller is in a building, or is the chiller just the orange rectangle? What's the white?
That's open space. The chiller sits outside the existing pump house.
Okay.
We put the wall around it, and then we have sound attenuation that's going to be affixed to the chiller.
Okay, I was confused.
But there's no roof on top of that barrier or anything?
Correct. We just have sound attenuation that would be affixed to the chiller.
And what's the 15-foot, is it structural wall, like blocks, or is it...
It's a permanent structural integrity wall, yes. We're still working through the final design now, whether it would be structural block or something.
It's equivalent to a building wall.
Yes, correct. Exactly.
Are all of the utilities, electric, water, anything else you need for the pump house already in place?
Yes, that's correct. Except I need to run a new electrical service fee from an existing manhole that we have on one of our adjacent properties.
In your, in your estimation, based on your experience doing your job, will this be an improvement as compared to the temporary cooling tower that you need?
Yes, it would be much, a much better, more efficient system.
Is it fair to say that there's no new traffic generated as a result of this improvement?
Yes, correct. Other than contractors coming to maintenance the equipment, correct?
There's currently a 10-foot playing buffer to the, I believe, to the east and to the south. Is that correct?
It is, yes. And that will be maintained.
And to the extent there's any degradation in that, gaps, anything like that, you'll check that and make sure it's updated and maintained?
Yes, that will be the university's grounds department will be monitoring that and making any improvements that are required to maintain that proper, yes.
In your estimation, with respect to any adjacent properties, this, this project would represent an improvement for them?
Absolutely, yes.
And in fact, it will be not visible or less visible from the properties to the south, is that the last crack?
That is correct, yes.
There's no new public sewer or water needed for this, is there?
There is not.
Will your upgrades change the ability of the fire company to service the pump house?
It will not, no.
Would you anticipate any additional surface water runoff at the property line?
We would not.
And is it your, is it your estimation that the existing stormwater facilities on the site will handle that 365 square feet of additional impermeables?
Yes, that's correct. And that was confirmed with our civil engineer.
And you'll confirm that with the township as we go through the process, Robert?
Yes, correct.
That's all the questions I have for the solicitors.
Anybody on the board have questions for Mr. McNamara?
I have a couple of questions. Was the cooling tower either temporary or part of the original design of the geothermal pump station?
You're going back 15 years.
15 years?
No, it's not, no.
Bob, I get asked why, but I guess that will answer. I guess you found at some point that it wasn't giving you sufficient, it wasn't doing its job properly.
The pump house, yes. What we need from supply water temperature, we needed to add the cooling tower roughly four years ago to assist with getting the temperatures that we need to into the loops. So, basically, it's a capacity issue with what we have on campus, that that piece of equipment was required to maintain the groundwater temperature we need, especially in May and September, when all the thorns are fully occupied at USH.
So, just to follow up on that specific question. So, has the, has the groundwater temperature increased over the last 15 years such that it's no longer capable of doing what originally it could do when it was first commissioned? Or is it that you have increased the loads in these 13 buildings that now your return temperature is higher? You've got a system that wasn't designed to accommodate that from the beginning?
The latter.
Okay.
That's a, that's a capacity issue that we've added buildings and we needed to add more capacity. But this is our solution at the moment to rectify that issue.
The university may have plans for further expansion in the future, correct? Would this cooling tower arrangement, as you're proposing now, be able to handle that?
It would not. We would need additional wellfields.
Are you saying that they need a larger cooling tower?
No, we would not add another, this air-cooled chiller is the service what we need now. We're not sure what the, how the system's going to be expanded and ever added to in the future. That's, obviously, you know, we're going through our master planning process. So, a lot of the decisions based on that would come out of that plan that would need to get approved by the board, council trustees, and then we would work with the township for any future wellfields that we would need.
So, just to clarify, at this point, you've got 13 buildings being serviced by the cooling tower. You don't anticipate there being any more buildings added to that?
Not, not immediately, no.
Not immediately?
Well, you know, again, like I said, one of our core mission statements is to be sustainable and traditional heating and cooling.
I told you guys you're doing that. Just a question about whether this is a good fit in the long term, if we're trying to get it.
For what our, for what we have now, yes, this is the most optimum solution that financially makes sense for us at this point, yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Because I, just, just cutting in on something you said. For, for future buildings that you add to your thermal, your testimony is that you, you would need additional geothermal wells?
That's correct.
But those geothermal wells could be connected to this pump house system, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, so for the next decade or possibly more, you could still add buildings, add geothermal wells, and they could run through what you're proposing here tonight, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
So, you wouldn't need an additional pump house or chiller for additional wells?
No, we used to.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because it, it sounded like it was coming across that when you add a building, you're going to need to upgrade what we're proposing tonight.
We don't need to upgrade the plan or the air-cooled chiller. We just need to add more geothermal wells.
Wouldn't you need, excuse me, wouldn't you need to upgrade the pump at least?
Well, we would add, add more pumps, but there's capacity for that within the current pump.
Well, I'm not concerned about the capacity, but if you're adding more pumps, you're adding more potential noise. And your noise barrier that you're designing is based on the existing pump to...
All, all the, all the pumps are inside the pump house. The only thing we're putting outside the, the, the only thing we're putting at this point outside the pump house is the new air-cooled chiller.
Well, if you did have to add additional pumps to accommodate additional buildings, you would have to come before the board again for conditional use, correct?
Of all the pumps, we would add would be in the existing pump house.
My view on that, Mr. Holland, would be that they would not have to come back for conditional use to just... The existing pump house has capacity for more pumps. If the board was concerned about noise with additional pumps being added, if buildings were to be added because new geothermal wells were dug to put new buildings online, I think the board could impose a condition on this approval that says if the university adds additional pumps in the pump house for future buildings coming online, the university would have to come back out and conduct a sound study to confirm that it's still in compliance with the, with the township's noise ordinance. And we're going to get into that a little bit with the next witness. But I will say, and I put together a list of proposed conditions. And, and, and one of them is to record the declaration that I referenced earlier. And another one of the proposed conditions that my clients already agreed to in advance is to have a noise expert come after completion of the chiller and conduct a noise measure, conduct noise measurements. I mean, the noise study is modeled, okay? So, what you'll hear about tonight from the sound expert is modeling that's done based on what's being installed. In order to confirm that modeling, what was done last time in the 2011 decision, and what we've agreed in advance as a condition that the board likes you to impose, is to do the same thing, which is to come back and do a noise study. In the previous round, Mr. Craig came out and took measurements, and there were, there were no decimal issues. I don't believe that a follow-up noise study was ever conducted, but I think part of that was that the decimal readings the township took revealed there were no concerns. I don't believe that a follow-up noise study was ever conducted, but I think part of that was that the decimal readings the township took revealed there were no concerns.
And this was before the temporary cooling tower, though?
Yes.
This had nothing to do with the temporary cooling tower? That was just installed without the township knowledge?
I'm going back to 2000s, I'm going back to 2011. So now, one of the conditions that we propose, and I'll provide those to this camp separately in the board's consent and in consideration of the decision, but one of the conditions that we propose is that once the temporary is put up, we'll come back and we'll check that. That's going to be in the next few weeks. Once the permanent improvements are installed, we, the university will have a sound expert come back and check the sound at that point in time, and if there's any issues, they'll be addressed in the next week. So just, just for clarification, so, so you go upfront that we're already proposing to do that.
On the same line of the question, I have to make sure I'm totally clear. So what you're building today, you believe that if you build another building on campus after you get master plan approved and land development plan approved, which is some years away, that the pump house building is sufficient, you might have to add more pumps, you might have to add more wells, but the cooling equipment that you're proposing for the board to approve will be sufficient to handle those additional buildings?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I just, what I, I think maybe where I thought maybe John was going is that if you're in this planning process, is it feasible, and I have no idea if it is, that you can evaluate whether you need to be, build a bigger chiller or a larger facility and avoid the need to have to keep coming back? But it sounds like it's, it's not that. It's the pumps within the building, and it would be wells? Okay.
Yeah, the whole, the whole plan was to plan for not just the current needs, but the future needs over the next at least 10 years.
So I just want to follow up on that because Mr. McNamara, you testified that this solution was good for 10 years. So that would be in lines of conversation we've just had. So what in 10 years' time means it's no longer adequate if it's not the addition of new buildings?
Sure, has the life expectancy of.
Okay, so you're just talking about the make, the life expectancy of equipment and the replacement of, you're not talking about the system itself will be undersized and not designed for what it needs to do in 10 years' time?
That's right.
Okay.
The life expectancy of the chiller is maintained, probably, so it's 25 years, so we don't add any buildings to the loop. What we have here should be adequate based on our engineering analysis.
Mr. Walsh, can I just make a follow-up point on what you just said? There's, there's no plan that predicts beyond 10 years. So past that timeframe, we don't know what's going to happen. And so that would have to be evaluated at that time. If there was a, if there was a future project and future wells on some project that hasn't even been conceived yet, that might change the equation, but that's not known, nor can be planned.
Yeah, understood. I just wanted to clarify why the 10 years was mentioned. So I have a couple of questions. So today, this temporary solution involves a cooling tower. So what are the sources of noise from the cooling tower? Do you have fans blowing air through it?
Yes.
And they have, you know, obviously a loud noise, the air movement itself?
That's the, right, it's the fans that are moving the water through.
Yeah. And is there a pump outside with the unit itself?
Yes.
Okay, so the pump has a certain level of noise with it?
Yes.
So those are the main sources of noise, correct, with the existing temporary arrangement?
Yes.
With the chiller, it's still air-cooled, so you're still going to have fans moving air across the coil or whatever else?
Yes.
So are they the same kind of fans in terms of scale, size, horsepower? Are they much smaller?
No, they're about the same. They're both five hundred ton units, so they're both, the chiller acts is more, it's got a condenser at X, yeah. It cools the water, chills the water, so the cooling tower basically just works with the heat rejection, trying to.
So the cooling tower is just rejecting heat from the, the water loop itself?
Correct.
The chiller is cooling the water, and then you've got to obviously cool, reject the heat from the, to get the chill loop back as well?
The water will go into the chiller, it'll be chilled down to whatever the degree is, and it'll put directly back in the supply,
Yeah.
which will be mixed with the wellfield water, but the water going back from the chiller will be much cooler than the organic from the wellfields, so.
Okay. So when you, when you testified it'll be, yes, a much, it'll be a more efficient, better system, will it be a better system from a noise generation standpoint, even though it's in a different part of the pump house property and it's going to have a more permanent acoustical enclosure?
Yeah, that's, that's part of what our acquisition.
Okay, so you'll be able to, the next witness will be able to describe the data from the modeling of the temporary versus the permanent?
Yes.
Okay.
And your statement is correct that the permanent solution is better from a noise perspective than the temporary. They're both more than compliant, but the permanent is even more sad.
Okay.
Just a further understatement. So, so the cooling tower was not part of the original design to the geothermal pump station. When did it become, when did you start putting a cooling tower, a temporary cooling tower? How far along was it after, was it constructed, did you have to do?
About 10 years.
Oh, okay. So for 10 years, so until 20, what's it, 20, 21?
Twenty, yeah, right.
So we're talking about like the last three, four years, last four years?
Yes.
What happened with the cooling tower?
Correct.
What, what, I'm just curious, what, what happened that after 10 years' time, you had to start putting a cooling tower?
Just the.
Was it additional buildings added to the system?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what triggered that event?
Correct.
Okay. Now, how long does the cooling tower is, is in operation in any given year? Does it start in April and go to?
April, October, October, November, depending how, what season of the weather.
April to October?
Yeah, depending what's, like, if we have a warm fall, we might keep it till November.
Okay. Now, there's no change in operation of the cooling tower from daytime to nighttime, correct?
Well, it, it, more or less, yes, it runs for more.
It runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 65 days a year? Well, not three or something, but just from.
Yeah, correct.
But there is no change in the noise level from daytime to nighttime?
No, significantly not.
I have one question probably for you, Brian, actually, I just remembered. The original conditional use mentioned a, a distance from neighboring properties of at least 20 feet, but the sketches we see here, both the as is, and obviously the proposed is 10 feet. Was there some relief granted from that conditional use requirement? I don't, I'm going back 13 years, I'm just curious.
I, I don't agree with the answer to that question, Mr. Halli.
Okay. Is there any other board questions for Mr. McNamara? Okay. Okay. Chris, we're ready for a quality question.
Sorry, I was trying to ask a question. I do want to ask another question about in the future. So if you determine you need additional wells, will this be the designated property that those wells will come to, to this pump house, or is that not determined yet?
You're talking, all, all the piping from the wells fields would go to the pump house, is that a question?
So this is the designated parcel that will always, for wherever you build buildings and wherever you put wells, it's all going to come to this property for the, the pump house?
Distribution of cans.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll start with parties. Ms. Shidda, do you have any questions for this witness, and limited to questions? Nothing, okay. Ms. David?
I have a question.
Can you come forward a little bit because he has to be able to hear you and speak loud? Thank you.
Sure. So around additional water runoff, it would be a, for that?
Yes.
Where does the water runoff go now?
Goes into the storm system and through outside the hallway.
Goes into the storm system?
Yes.
Do you know what that translates?
Goes, I would have to look on an engineer's drawing, but that goes into the storm system for a boat.
Just to clarify, you mean the stormwater management system is on the property?
That's correct, yes.
And just, uh, just if you could clarify, you said that there is a temporary cooling system that has.
The one we currently have, been choosing the last number here.
Yeah, oh, yes. Was there, other than additional buildings, was there another incident that caused the need for this cooling system?
That was just over. That was just over capacity that we needed.
And is this a closed system? So does it look like a closed or closed-end system?
Well, we, it's, we tapped it, no, we tapped it to the wellfield, and we break groundwater up through the wells.
And we have it, the hot water then goes away. What happens to it? You don't know?
So in the, in the summer, we, water comes back hot, it goes into the ground, it's dissipated because the groundwater is cold, it goes to the plumbing system, and it goes back to the supply. The fall, it's the opposite, the water comes in cold, it goes into the ground, the groundwater is hotter than once it's being sent down to, so the water temperature is raised, and then we pump that back.
Mr. Diskin, do you have any questions?
I do, yeah, just a couple. Just, you, you testified that you're aware and agree with the fact that everything south of the pump house is not subject to being further developed by the university?
That's the property below the pump house of the storm. Yes.
You also agree that the property to the west of that pump house is not subject to future development?
That's correct. So behind, talking behind 114 Rosedale?
No, I'm talking, no, from the, from the pump house over to Roseland Avenue.
That's correct, so everywhere.
Exactly, south and west of the pump house.
Correct, so 114 Rosedale is that building to the left, to the northwest of the pump house, so that.
Right, so behind, behind that?
Yes, correct.
And it's for everything from that back?
Yes.
So basically the entire parcel, 52-5 and-14 cannot be further developed?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
There's allowance for the building, the previously existing building, the original building, uh, that's located on the front of that parcel to be improved or redeveloped. The limitation is that the total impermeas coverage, I think, for the site can't go beyond 20%.
20%, so did the applicant demolish, what was the dwelling at 114 West Rosedale?
No.
Okay, so the condition reads that if the applicant chose to demolish that, the dwelling that's at 114 West Rosedale, that they would be entitled to build another building on the same lot as the lot where the building is located today, which now it's all on one lot, so we'd have to pinpoint that location. Provide a total impermeas cover on combined merged parcel shall not exceed 20% of net lot area. And the use of the building must be something that's permitted in the R3 district.
Correct. I don't, I don't agree with the characterization that there was ever agreement or condition that to the west of the pump house couldn't be developed. It's to the south of the pump house. That's what was discussed in the 2011 year, I, I was here. And that was the condition that was supposed to be imposed anyway. So that, that area to the, to the west of the pump house building would be available for that up to 20% impermeas coverage if that original building was redeveloped.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with you, your interpretation, because the three properties that were a subject of the conditional use order were defined as the property capital P, and that condition speaks to requiring the merger of the three parcels
Correct.
and that there be no further development or subdivision of the property capital P, so.
To be, to be fair, what I, what I meant, I meant south of that, of that house.
It's, it's.
I, I mean, that, that, from the, from the pump house, like where the apartment area and where the temporary, there's going to be, from that area straight over to Roseland. I think that's for sure.
Yeah, and, and what I'm saying, Mr. Diskin, is I don't think that was the intention of that original condition because that original condition, the comp, was written to accommodate a potential expansion of the buildings that are there, up to a 20% purpose. It wouldn't be, it couldn't utilize that whole area because you couldn't fit it within the 20%. But I think certainly you'd be allowed to expand into that area, and that was never intended to.
So, so 20% of the whole, of the, the whole merged.
The whole merged parcel.
In the corner.
And it's this area from this line, sorry for my shakes, it's this line down that was intended to be restricted from future development, not in this area here where this could potentially be expanded to utilize that 20%.
Where's the building that we're talking about that the order speaks to that if you choose to demolish? Can you point to it? Okay, so what I believe is that that building can be demolished and replaced, but the rest of the property cannot be developed?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
With the exception of the impermeas coverage can go up to 20%.
When you, if you demolish that and put another building, yes, then the impermeas, yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, all I'm saying is you can't drop more coolers on that space to the west of the pump house. If, if you redevelop.
Not without coming back to the board.
Correct, correct. I'd agree with that, Mr. Halli, with what Miss Can said.
And then the only other question I have is, is the acoustical enclosure for the permanent chiller actually designed at this point? Or is the sound.
Yeah, so witnesses, it's, it's. We're close, right, or, um, our sound acquisition could answer that more accurately. Okay, we're, we're pretty far along, yes, it's not.
You can ask that question of the gentleman who testifies.
Can I ask a question to those who are parties to these conditional issues?
When they testify, you can, John? Do you have another witness?
I do.
And can you spell, well, maybe you'll spell when you present him because I don't know how, acutition, acu. I want to say acupuncture, but. My spelling is not very good, and I definitely can't write that word down.
The applicant calls Riley Broom.
Right, what was his last name?
Broom. Broom.
Okay.
Broom, broom, are you there? Thank you.
There we go.
If you need to go back to anyone you've already talked about, I'm just going to go.
Please, right here. Swear a testimony about the copy, the truth, full truth, the truth is the hope you got or saw you affirm. Thank you.
Please state your full name and start your last.
Riley Broom, uh, last name is D-R-O-O-M-E.
And where, where do you work and how long do you work there?
Metropolitan Acoustics. I worked there full-time professionally for four years. I did two stints through Drexel's Cooperative Education Program as well, for six months each, for another year before that.
And I'm showing you exhibit mark A5 for identification. That's your resume received, correct?
Correct.
What is your educational background?
I received a BA in Economics from University of Pennsylvania and a BS in Mechanical Engineering at Drexel.
What is your experience in acoustics and conducting sound studies and sound modeling?
I've been conducting these types of studies for, for the duration of my time at Metropolitan, so the last four years. And, uh, there's numerous studies listed here.
And including that, you, you also perform that type of work when you did your co-op or whatever you refer to it as, with Drexel University, correct?
Yes.
There are numerous projects listed on your resume where you, you were consulted as a sound expert, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
In those cases, did your clients rely on your expertise as a sound consultant?
Yes.
I'll offer Mr. Broom as an expert in acoustics, sound modeling, and sound and noise consultation.
That's fine with me. Any other board member different? No, no objection.
Thank you. Mr. Broom, were you present tonight during, for the start of this hearing and during Mr. McNamara's testimony?
I was.
Are you familiar with the application that he identified that was filed with this township for conditional use approval for the pump house upgrades?
Yes.
Is it fair to say that you have reviewed the specifics of the proposed pump house upgrades and consulted with the university on those upgrades with respect to sound and noise implications?
Yes.
Is it fair to say that you've also reviewed the specifics of the temporary cooling tower that Mr. McNamara testified about? And that the university will be using this season?
Yes.
Did you review the township noise ordinance?
Yes.
Did you perform the sound modeling and prepare a noise ordinance report?
Yes.
I'm showing you what I marked as exhibit A6 for identification, can I identify that?
Yes, that is our March 10th appearance report.
When you say our, do you, do you have a colleague you've worked with at Metropolitan who you worked with or oversaw the running of this project?
I did, I worked with Brian Cranage, 13 years of experience as an acoustic consultant, master's in acoustics. He's associate principal at Metropolitan Acoustics. So he was involved in the project throughout, he attended meetings with the university architects. I built the models and primarily drafted the report that reviewed it, the results.
And Brian is here this evening, correct?
Correct.
And he was at the planning meeting as well?
Correct.
Could you, could you just walk us through the applicable noise ordinance that you reviewed by township ordinance?
Yes, so the noise ordinance has criteria relating to continuous sounds, which is the type of noise that will be generated by this equipment. It has fixed limits for any noise generated on a given property as measured on receiving properties in the surrounding area. Those limits vary with the use type of the receiving properties. The applicable uses to this project are commercial and residential use types. They both have the same noise ordinance criteria, which are 65 AW to decibels DVA for daytime from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM and 60 DVA nighttime, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. for daytime from seven AM to ten PM, and sixty DVA nighttime, ten PM to seven AM.
And based on your review, there's both commercial and residential uses nearby to such a site, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the commercial property would be the property to the?
The northeast.
The northeast, so if I'm on Rosedale, facing the pump house property to the left?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the, like a chiropractor's office, is that right?
That was my understanding, yes.
Can you walk this board through the temporary cooling tower and your analysis and conclusions on that aspect of the pump house?
Yes, so we, uh, built a three D model of the project sites, um, using SoundPlan. Uh, it's a widely accepted and used, uh, sound modeling software used in the industry. Um, we're able to import the existing terrain, existing buildings, and then we're able to incorporate the, uh, proposed designs of the project as well, so we can put in the twelve-foot tall sound barrier that is planned. We can put in all the noise generating equipments, um, located within the sound barrier, as Dave laid out. Um, we can input all their various acoustical properties, in this case. The sound barrier has transmission loss values of how much sound it can pass through it. It has absorption values of how much sound it absorbs. Uh, the sound equipment, the cooling tower and the pump, both have sound levels associated with them that we're able to input into the model. We can put those sources inside the, uh, sound barrier, we can place them at the appropriate heights, and then the sounds, uh, SoundPlan can propagate that sound out to the surrounding area.
Can you review figure three in your report for the board? I found the screen, it's interesting.
Yes, so this is a noise map of the sound generated by the temporary installation equipment, both the cooling tower and the pump. Um, you can see how the colors correspond to the levels at any given location. Um, and you can see that, you know, as designed, the noise ordinance is met, uh, both day and nighttime, uh, at all adjacent properties.
And you also know there, the, um, you've accommodated a, a, the pump that's located outside of the temporary cooling tower.
That's correct.
And you've noted that that's up to a height of five feet, you include that in your modeling?
Yes, it was not selected yet, but we were able to estimate sound levels based on horsepower of the pump. Um, and we put it at the maximum height that we understood it could reach, uh, based on, uh, discussion with the mechanical engineer. Um, we incorporated that into our model.
In your professional opinion, based on the analysis that you conducted, will the temporary cooling tower comply with the township noise ordinance? I asked you earlier about, you did work for clients and did noise modeling on numerous other projects over the course of your career. Have you had any problems with your, your modeling in the past?
We have not.
Once the project was constructed?
No.
So your, your, your modeling and the predictions have proven to be accurate over the course of the projects you've worked on?
From our experience, at least on projects I've worked on, they're not, really wise from clients.
Can you review your analysis with respect to the permanent, uh, improvements with the, the chiller?
Yes.
The McNamara review.
So using the same software, uh, similar procedures, we're able to build a three D model of the installation. We included the fifteen-foot, uh, CMU wall as designs, and we placed the chiller inside with, uh, the sound data we were provided by the manufacturer, and it's similar, it will propagate that noise out to the surrounding area. Um, as you can see, the worst-case location regarding noise is the, uh, northeast commercial property, um, which is over the noise ordinance. Uh, all the residential properties to the south, um, are substantially quieter. They're both further away, and they also have additional shielding from the pump house building itself.
If we go to figure six as compared to figure five, can you explain, um, what that shows?
Yes, so this is a sound map with our proposed treatment to the chiller. Um, the specifics, excuse me, the specifics of that treatment, um, are still being designed. It's gonna be custom components that have to be sized for this piece of equipment. Um, it has to, they have to work with mechanical engineer to make sure, uh, it functions within the system mechanically. Um, our preliminary numbers that we've received from the manufacturer that makes those components indicate that it's, uh, achievable solution. And in this case, this is showing, if they meet the noise ordinance of sixty DVA at the, kind of, worst-case location of that chiropractor's property line, this is what the rest of the noise map we expect to look like. Um, it could be subject to some change as we get the final components selected. Um, I don't expect it would be significant and could even be quieter than this, because this is assuming they only just meet it at the chiropractor's property line.
So, so figure six shows the modeling after the installation of the noise dampening improvements that you recommended, recommended be installed with the permanent chiller improvement.
Correct.
And all the surrounding or nearby residential properties, you're, you're in the dark green, which is well, well below.
Yes, that is below forty-five DVA, so more than fifteen below the noise ordinance line.
Can you, can you explain for the board and for the, those in attendance, what that means? From, from a, a, a non-sound expert's perspective?
Uh, forty-five decibels would be around some, a relatively quiet, um, kind of, outdoor neighborhood, just background sound levels. And in terms of just how decibels work, a ten-decibel difference is perceived as half as loud or half as, uh, quiet, depending on what direction you're going. Um, so every ten decibels you go down, it's half, another half. So fifteen would be perceived as substantially quieter.
Will you be continuing to work with the university on the specifics of installing what you recommended, associated with the?
We'll continue until the final components have been selected, and we will then check those components in our model, um, and revise this report to include the final selections and check that they do impact the noise ordinance.
I think you've essentially already said this, but in, in your professional opinion, will the permanent upgrades to the pump house comply with the township's noise ordinance?
Yes.
And am I understanding correctly that that's, even though the temporary cooling tower applies with the township's noise, noise ordinance as you've explained, the permanent is markedly even less impactful from a noise perspective or a sound perspective?
Yes, to all the residential properties to the south, uh, it will be significantly quieter with the proposed attenuation.
I was, I was talking earlier about some proposed conditions, conditions that were in the two thousand and eleven decision. Uh, are you in agreement that it makes sense to have a sound expert come out and check the sound after the improvements are installed?
Yes.
Both tempered and permanent, correct?
Yes.
On that thought, if the testing reveals that you're not meeting the ordinance, what do you do?
Yeah, well, that's my next question.
Okay, we think alike.
Hypothetically, if something were not as you predicted, it sounds like that's not likely, but in the event that that happened, in your opinion, could that be addressed through additional sound mitigation measures?
Hypothetically, it could, it's difficult to say exactly what that would look like without actual measurements of how far an exceedance is, or, or what the actual problem looks like. Um, but there are additional measures that will all be raised higher potentially, or a larger, uh, silencer, which will be on top of the chiller, but it's difficult to answer for certain, uh, like, the degree of exceedance.
Are all of the opinions that you've offered to the board this evening drawn to a reasonably clear professional certificated room? I have no further questions for this witness, and just so I don't forget, I would ask that all of the exhibits that have been presented be admitted.
No problem on the admission of those exhibits, I don't believe, okay.
Brian, could you go back to page six in that exhibit? Which is the one with the temporary?
So he's looking at exhibit A six of the noise report? Tables, page six, table two, or just the picture?
Now, this, I'm just questioning the veracity of your study, okay? So I can understand that. You're saying this is the temporary, um, cooling tower arrangement, and you have a, a computer model prediction of what these sound levels would be given its location and proximity to the cooling tower?
Correct.
Yeah, would, would this be true with your computer model in all atmospheric conditions? If the wind is going from the north to the south, or from the east to the west? If it's a cool night or a hot night, I mean, would that be true in every night, every situation? Or could there be variances in how the, the sound level would be given what's going on?
Uh, there could be small variances, um, I'll start with the wind, we assume calm conditions, which is just kind of the standard way we model these things, it's so variable, it's very hard to predict. The atmosphere, um, temperature, humidity, those could all affect sound propagation.
So it's possible with your computer model that you may actually see the, uh, ordinance requirement for noise level on certain conditions? Could you relate the limit here, with these residences at sixty?
Uh, excuse me, um, the differences in sound propagation through different atmospheric conditions is more relevant to very long-distance sound transmission on the order of thousands of feet to miles. I think would have much smaller effects over a few hundred feet, as is the case here.
I'm just curious like with that, I mean, if you're within a hundred, probably something, or half a mile away.
Be, I mean, the, because the change takes longer to have a noticeable difference. It takes longer to, over a longer distance, it'll have time to accumulate more of a fall-off or lack of fall-off. You know, if you're standing right next to a speaker, it doesn't really matter.
But you have to take into account sound dimensions, given an actual cooling tower being in this area. And nothing was done as far as a noise study, this is all just a computer prediction?
Yes, correct, it does not exist yet.
And, and it's, it's fair to say you can't do a noise study until improvements are made, correct?
No, we can't take a measurement until.
No, no noise study would done prior to this, it was years, correct? Again, this is just a computer model. And, and, you know, there is noise, and then there's noise, right? I mean, right now, I'm making noise.
Sure.
But then, a motor, a pump fifty horsepower, uh, motor pump would generate a lower frequency noise, like a hum, almost like a vibration. How can you measure that and what effect that would have on those neighbors in close proximity to the pump station?
Everyone reacts differently to sound, I mean, more tonal sounds are certainly going to be more annoying. Um, over these distances, again, it's not, doesn't have quite the same tonal elements. It's also just not something that is considered in the noise ordinance, which is what our analysis was aimed at, compliance with the noise ordinance.
I'd just be curious to hear from the neighbors, and I'm not asking any questions about how they have, have experienced in the past, but the temporary cooling tower would be below hum frequency noise. And with your acoustic design to, for, for the permanent cooling tower, have you taken any consideration as far as the low-hum frequency noise in designing the, uh, noise acoustic barrier?
Well, the noise ordinance creates here the single level that's what we designed to, which sums up all of the, uh, individual frequency bands. Um, that is how we're designing our treatment.
Well, I know you're, you're tying to the noise ordinance, but can you at least answer, do you expect there to be a constant sort of dull hum coming from this kind of equipment, this kind of acoustic barrier?
I can't speak to the exact character of the noise that is gonna be existing that people are not seeing.
Can I ask a follow-up on that question? If, is that something that would be detected after it's installed and you go out to take measurements?
Yes.
And then take appropriate mitigating measures accordingly?
Uh, yeah, we could explore additional mitigation if that is.
I don't know how we define that, though, how do we define what's a, a low hum, a dull hum that bothers one person or not? We have, I'd need somebody to provide expert advice to me on that one.
You, you can't, because it's perceived differently, and I've been through a lot of these, hearing the sound testimony, and every expert always says, you can't, you can never predict, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, if I've misheard, but you can't really predict how a receiver of it is going to perceive it.
Not exactly, no, I mean, everyone just psychologically perceives sound differently. It was annoying to one person, someone else might not even really notice. So, not saying that one person isn't being annoyed, but you can't predict it easily.
So, so, uh, go ahead, Tim.
Um, I have some questions, um, I guess on two instances, in your report, um, there's estimate on a sound, sound attenuation, um, is that correct? Pretty much, you could say, and I, I would say on the cooling tower pumps on page four, and also on the section on page nine on the acoustic enclosure system. I'll start with the cooling tower pump.
Yes.
It starts off with the exact location of the pump has not been provided. We understand it will be located west of the cooling tower, which is an estimate. Um, won't that alter the noise, depending on where it's actually located? Um, that hasn't even been determined yet? And also, no additional information or sound data was provided for the pump? So overall, an octave band sound levels were estimated. Aren't those two major things that could affect the sounds and barriers?
If it's in the general area that we've located it, I don't expect moving it a few feet or ten feet around to substantially change the results.
Does that affect your model by any chance, um, of where the pump is located?
I wouldn't expect, the pump is also quieter than the cooling tower. It's also lower to the ground than the cooling tower. So it is not a substantial, we're not predicting it to be a substantial contributor to the sound levels.
Okay, but again, it's an estimate at this point in time, okay? Second section on the acoustic enclosure system on page nine. The manufacturer of the acoustic enclosure, in conjunction with the mechanical engineer, selects the individual components of the enclosure, I mean, the design goal at the property line. These components are not currently selected. Therefore, figure six and table five below provide an estimate of the predicted sound levels based on achieving a maximum sound pressure level of sixty DVA at the property line. I guess I'm concerned with that section, if we don't even know what components were selected yet, but yet we have a model that's going to determine our noise level at the acoustic enclosure system.
We've been in contact with the manufacturer, who's, um, going to provide these components, and they've provided some preliminary numbers for what we can expect them to achieve acoustically, and checked them in this model, and that's where we're providing this. We believe it's, uh, very much achievable to get the acoustic performance we need at these components, but it's just a question of them designing it, uh, also so that it functions with the mechanical system, because it's a custom-designed equipment.
Okay, so again, it's an estimate at this point in time.
It is an estimate, yes, and we will update it once we get, uh, the final numbers.
So that could be a condition, that once you determine the final design of, and are they considered dampening measures? That, you use that terminology, is that what we would call them?
Um, some of it, yes, I mean, it's likely gonna be in the form of, of absorption on the inside of the concrete, so CMU walls, um, as well as a silencer placed on top of the chiller that takes, um, attenuates the noise coming directly off the top of the unit.
So if I just use the word attenuation devices, is that the right word to use? Is that a broad umbrella term for whatever?
Acoustic.
Within the acoustic enclosure system, I would add.
Well, you just, so that's where I'm not clear, is, can you go back to the drawing of, we're talking about the permanent, the chiller, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and that was my second...
So is there anything, it's just within, let me get the picture back up.
And that was my second thing that happened as a condition.
The wall, are we talking about everything that's going to dampen the sound is all within that wall, or is it within the chiller itself?
Within the wall.
Within the wall.
Within the footprint of the wall. The treatment on top could potentially go above the height of the wall.
Okay. So an appropriate condition would be that once the university designs the attenuation devices that they intend to install, that your noise study be updated to reflect that you still get compliant, compliance with the ordinance?
I would characterize it as design zones, it completes the design, because they've been working on the design, they're just fine-tuning what's available from the manufacturer, and how that design's going to be implemented. Mr. Broom's testimony was, he's going to continue to work with the university through that process and then update his...
Right, but the township has no details on what those attenuation devices are, so it seems like there needs to be, sort of, close the loop on that in terms of...
I agree with your condition, I'm just clarifying that...
It started, is what you're...
Yeah, they've been looking at that.
Okay.
And that would be confirmed, as you go through the final design.
So if it's confirmed as a completed design, aren't we saying that figure six has to be attained as a condition, potentially?
Yeah, they have to meet the code.
Well, there's more than the code, though, right?
Yes.
In other words, if figure six would be updated?
Yes, figure six would be updated, but the...
Oh, updated?
So what I'm saying is...
Yes.
Figure six shows that the properties south of the pump station property never go above forty-five decibels, correct?
I think that, I think that it would be appropriate to say that...
It's not entirely accurate, some of them are...
You need to top out her.
Sorry. You see a location to there, it's...
That's figure five.
That's five, yeah.
They're talking about the...
Oh, sorry, with, with permanent.
So...
So the only property on figure six that has a problem potentially is the one right adjacent to the pump station, which is, what you say is a commercial property.
Correct.
And even that shows it within. But what I'm saying is, can we, would you agree to a condition that says the noise levels as shown on this figure six of less than forty-five decibels, that all of the properties are attained at all times?
Or under all conditions?
I mean, the only concern I have with that is that that's, what he's saying is that you're well-done with the ordinance required, what we're required to do is meet the ordinance, but I don't have an issue with...
But your representing information says, based on what you're doing, you will achieve this goal.
I don't have an issue with...
This is an estimation of what...
One person can speak at a time. So please, as ever speaking, let that person finish.
I don't have an issue with, we're presenting this, and we're, I understand what you're saying, we want to hold you to this.
Mm-hmm.
This is what the model shows. What we're required to do is meet the ordinance. I don't have a problem with the condition that the applicants will generally meet what's shown on this figure six, but to the extent that this is only a prediction, it may vary to some degree. If it varies significantly, obviously, then the university and the sound consultant are going to look at additional noise, but we can't say it's going to be exactly what's shown on six, that would be sort of like an impossible condition.
Well, I didn't say exactly it's shown, I just said that all properties are less than forty-five decibels, other than the one that's adjacent to you. On the west-east side.
I would ask, I would ask you to consider a little wiggle room on that, because technically that would be a legal condition, because you're creating an ordinance standard that doesn't exist. But then again, I'm just asking you to consider that when you consider your conditions. I'm not terribly concerned about it, because I've worked with Mr. Broom and with the university on putting all this together, and comfortable with what they're presenting. I just don't want to get in a spot where we tightened it so much that a variation on the modeling is going to, is going to create a problem that's not a real problem, because we're so far below the requirement.
Can I ask a very simple question? If you weren't, if you were not to install this chiller, as it's depicted here with these sound levels here, what would be in its place?
The temporary cooling tower indefinitely.
And so, we're all in agreement that the noise produced by the new chiller is substantially lower than the temporary cooling tower that's there?
Yes.
If the chiller doesn't go in, the cooling tower that's there will remain there?
Except it doesn't have approval to remain there. They've never gotten approval for that temporary tower, they just put it up. So that's technically in violation, and that's why we've been working with them over the years to say, come back and get approval, do something about it, this is the application to do something about it. So I don't want people to think that they can just keep putting the temporary tower up when they don't have approval for that. Technically, they should have come back and gotten conditional use approval for something like that.
They've been doing that for like four years now.
Right.
I don't know if I agree with that statement, but I do agree...
What approvals do you have for the temporary tower? None.
Yeah, and I don't...
You're seeking it now.
I've included the information about the temporary cooling tower in the application so the board can see the full picture. I'm not saying that the university needs an approval to have the temporary...
Well, what approval do you have for it? What approval do you have for it? You had a conditional use approval for a pump house. There was no representation of a cooling tower, there's representations, you're going to meet the ordinances, and with the, you just put the temporary tower up. Again, I think we're past that, and we want you to process this application, but I don't think it's fair to say that the temporary tower just keeps coming back every year without, without approval from the board.
We're trying to eliminate that.
I understand that.
That's the whole point, yeah.
I understand, but the neighbors have had to deal with it for four years.
I understand that.
Mr. Broom, I have a couple other questions as well. So, the model you show on figure three, well, first of all, actually, the model you're using, is it a nationally-recognized model? Is it a proprietary model? Is it something in your company, or is it...
Sound plan is, it's an industry standard model.
An industry standard?
Yes.
Okay, so you're testifying to that?
Yes.
Figure three shows the noise map prediction with the temporary cooling tower installed with the as-planned sound barrier for this summer, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And the planned sound barrier this summer is a big improvement, or I think that's what Mr. Martin McNamara said, or somebody stated it, is going to be a lot better designed than previous experiences with this temporary delay.
It was there before, offered minimal, little sound...
So you have not modeled what previous year's noise conditions would have been like? There's no information in this exhibit that shows what it would have been like last year, for example, correct?
Uh, that's correct, it was not.
And would, in your experience, would you expect that what's shown here would be substantially worse if there has, if there is no attain, no sound?
We did, I mean, we looked at it, it wasn't included in the report, as it was not a...
I'm just trying to understand what the baseline would have been for anyone experiencing this in the past.
I'm getting to the answer.
Yeah.
Just explaining why we didn't include it in the report, because it was not a part of the design at all, they're already incorporating this sound control measure. If you were to take away the barrier of the surrounding, you know, at least of these study receiver locations, all these closest residential properties, all experience about a five to six decibel increase. So that would be, just again, for reference, five to six decibels, we would consider to be a clearly noticeable difference. Ten decibels is twice as loud, half as quiet.
So these properties labeled two, three, four, five, potentially would have had sound decibels in the range of sixty to sixty-five, or possibly even higher, with what has been experienced in previous years? With, yeah, with...
I can't say about previous years, because it was a...
But in your opinion, your professional opinion, would it have been substant, you said six to seven higher, so those that are shown now as fifty to sixty could have been in the sixty to seventy range?
It has to be one at a time.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Can't talk at the same time. Sorry. It would be five to six points higher, so, you know, they would, there would be, some of these locations would be in excess of the noise ordinance, but not all of them.
Okay, and then, the noise generation is coming from the fans and the pump, right? And those, both of those components have been modeled in these figures that you show in this, these different situations, correct?
Correct.
Other questions from the board?
I do have a question, so, and you might not be the right person, but as far as the location of the cooling tower, was it strategically placed in the best location to mitigate the noise to the neighbors? Or does it have to be located in a specific location for it to function?
No, we had them located specifically for the best acoustic...
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, anybody else on the board?
I have one more question. Mr. Broom, the difference between figure five and figure six, shows a substantial reduction in noise outside of the enclosure itself.
Yes.
What are the things that you're modeling that are achieving that significant reduction in noise between those two?
So it is, I got a sound-absorbing material on the inside of the concrete wall, which prevents sound buildup in the enclosure and reflections traveling out of the top of the enclosure. It could also be a silencer bank placed on the top, so any, you know, the air, the discharge air traveling out of the fan to the top, breath to travel through these silencers, and that gives you attenuation for the noise coming off the top of the unit, which is, being the highest, closest to the top of the wall, is most easily able to travel over.
And, so Brian, are those improvements that Mr. Broom just described part of the budget for this permanent project?
The, all of the, all of the sound attenuation materials needed to achieve what Mr. Broom testified about included in this report are part of the question.
Okay, and I'm sure to answer my question. He just described two specific things relative to the ability to get to figure six level of noise on his model. Are those two specific things included in the project budget?
I don't know the answer to that question, either Mr. Broom or Mr. McNamara would have to answer that question. Do you know the answer?
I know, we've had some back-and-forth with the equipment manufacturer about some pricing, can't say it's...
Yes, budget will contain what is in the, in the recommendations and the design for the noise to meet those requirements, yes.
It's figure six.
Yes. So even if, even if you had to have the improvements that Mr. Broom was just describing to the board, that would be included in your budget, is that right? Yeah, I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so if there's any mitigation activities required as a result of the sound test that's going to be performed after installation, based on the model, needs to be done, is there a 10% engineering contingency in this right now?
Yeah, it'll be covered in the budget, yes.
Okay, so you have the money in the budget for any contingencies that may occur that we don't know or yet, based on the estimated model?
Correct, yes.
Okay, we'll go to the parties. Ms...
Shute.
Shute. Any questions?
So, where the cooling towers proposed to be located for this summer, it's, so, how far is it from the original location? Is it in a different location?
Mr. McNamara, will you move forward?
Yes.
So that the court can hear you better.
You're talking about where we've had our last four years.
From 2024?
That'll be the same regardless.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Devitt?
I just have one, a similar question. You're talking about additional...
Can you come forward, I'm sorry, Jim has to hear you. Just, just face him, so he can hear you.
When you talk about additional shielding, like the, are you considering things like the bamboo that's there, sixty feet tall, that hopefully will be taken down? I'm on the other side, so are other people, like two, three, I'm not representative.
Are you concerned that the loss of the bamboo is going to...
Yeah, that's got to go, and...
Anything else, like extremely dense foliage, like expansive foliage doesn't provide much sound?
So that's not considered when you're considering the sound that we're getting?
No.
Mr. Diskin?
Yeah, this is actually kind of a...
Come forward.
Kind of a follow-up on Ms. Camp's question about the, when you asked where the, I think it was key, and I think you said cooling tower, be located in certain spots, did you mean the chiller?
No, I meant the cooling tower, I meant the temporary.
Okay, so that's, that's, was occurring to be that, it's his question, I'm not sure what it's for, but because the chiller is not proposed to be installed until October, is that what someone said?
March. March.
Okay.
The whole process, the operation next March.
So is there any practical reason that the temporary cooling tower couldn't be located where the permanent chiller is going to be located?
Yes, because all the temporary pipe that we need for the cooling tower is already in that location. We've just used that for previous years, it's all there, ready to go.
So you could run pipes to the location where the chiller is going to be, and quickly?
No, the cooling tower would stay where it is in the last four years, because all the temporary connections we need.
But it could be, it could be done, so...
At a cost, yeah. It's not, that's not something where, which we'd want to, correct?
Wouldn't that also, wouldn't that also, because you, your cooling season can run through October, even in early November, correct?
Yes, correct.
So if that was located there, wouldn't it be an impediment to installing the permanent chiller on time for next cooling season?
That's correct, that's why it's a priority.
But the goal is to get the chiller installed as quickly as you can? The sound's designed, the approvals are all in order, the goal is to get that up, correct? I think it's Mr. McNamara, it's a question for you.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
So just to follow up on that, would you accept a condition that you cannot ever use a temporary cooler again after 2025?
I couldn't allow my client to accept that condition, but I could allow my client to accept the condition that it won't use a temporary cooler for the period of time that it's designed, this system to run, to help run the geothermal system.
Say that again?
For the ten years.
For the ten-year period? For the ten-year period, yeah.
That you can guarantee that they won't use the temporary cooling?
On this site.
On this site.
Correct.
After when, sorry?
From the time, from, from the time of the, the approval, or whatever you want to call it, the time that this is approved, installed.
The chiller.
So my concern is, my experience with the university projects is, they take a little longer than initially is told to us. So my goal here would be to have some way to ensure that by next season, by March or April, whenever it is, April to October, by April of next year, you have moved ahead with this project on a timely basis and are right there, ready to start it up. How do we guarantee that in a condition?
Well, talk, we can, I think we can achieve that through conditions. It's like force majeure, third party, what is force majeure?
You would just have to provide for, like, everything that's going on with tariffs, and that could have an impact. We're not expecting that it will, we're not seeing anything that's going to be...
Could be a delivery of the chiller, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I can't guarantee that, you know, we're doing everything we can to get...
I understand, again, it's about things that are not outside of control are fine, things that are inside of control, we just want it to be done.
I think we can work on appropriate language.
I agree.
Any other questions for this witness? Okay, do you have any other witnesses?
I do not.
Okay, does, let's go with the parties. Do you want to come forward and make any statements or provide any evidence? Ms. Shute. And if you do, please come up to the microphone if you don't mind. Just remind them of your property address, if you don't mind.
So I'm at a twenty South Church Avenue, or Church Avenue. And our property is just south of the Sykesville Union parking lot. And so, just to clarify, you know, the nature of the sound, just so that we, the, the nature of the sound from that temporary cooling tower for the last few summers really has been, it's not been a low-hum, it's actually been fairly high-pitched tones that are constant, that we can actually hear from inside our house with the windows closed. So I just wanted to clarify the nature of the neighbors', you know, concerns with what has been. I am, you know, pleased that steps are being taken to mitigate the noise and a permanent solution is being sought. So just wanted to clarify what those initial concerns were about.
And that was in the summer, or all, anytime?
Yes, for the past several summers, as long as these temporary cooling towers have been in place.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Devitt, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't have, I don't have this time.
Okay, and Mr. Diskin?
I don't think I have something to say. I was just going to say that the board is aware of my feeling about the cooling tower, because I've been here talking about it multiple times.
I've been here talking about it multiple times. And it's, it has been in fact impolite in the past. I appreciate the board's attention to this and getting it handled with the country employees and the board as well. And I want to say, I think this is actually a pretty good solution because it gets it around the other side of the pump house. I'm assuming if everything is done according to the modeling, I probably won't appear at my property, my properties, which is great. The only thing I do want to mention though, the idea about the cooling tower coming back and, you know, in a condition that it won't come back, I'd just like to point out that that cooling tower is in fact a zoning violation because the definition of the pump house requires it to be located inside underground. And that thing sitting out there is a violation, the cooling tower. So I think you guys have the power to stop that thing coming back any time you want, if they have any, if you need a condition or not. So, list of conditions that I figured, I think they're pretty much all been discussed, so.
Okay.
And you have a list of the conditions that.
What I do is after the record's closed, I will prepare a draft decision for the board's consideration. Many of the conditions have been, I think Mr. Naval indicated he has a list he's going to provide, but we will discuss that with the board and then the actual written decision or oral and written decision has to happen at a public meeting within 45 days. But yes, everything will be memorialized in a written decision.
And the regulations that are discussed tonight?
Will be likely incorporated, if not additional conditions, yes.
So if I go through the checklist and miss something, I have the opportunity to.
So what we could do is any of the parties, if you'd like to send an email to me, it's sort of like a memo of law, so to speak, where you could suggest what conditions you would want the board to impose. That's not, we were able to do that if you'd like to do that. So I have a card I can give you. The board can consider those. No promises or guarantees that the board will impose them exactly as you ask, but that's definitely something that they'll consider. Okay?
Thanks.
Mr. Naval, anything else?
No, just to say that, that through the testimony and evidence that was provided tonight, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the township's ordinance requirements, the conditional use criteria, and we would ask that the application for the permanent chiller upgrades to the pump house be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the hearing is closed right now, I believe. Chris, incorrect?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate you putting up with us, talking over each other.
So Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the board has 45 days in which to render a decision and that deadline would be May 30 of 2025.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Chris. I'm just making out of that. Okay, we're ready to move on to agenda item number eight, seven. Discussion and possible approval of a professional services proposal from Carroll Engineering for the upgrade of the restroom facilities at West Ocean Community Park. Chris, would you like to introduce this, please?
Hi, this is Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is a professional services proposal from Carroll Engineering Corporation related to the upgrade of the restroom facilities at West Ocean Community Park. The township is undertaking improvements to the facilities at this location, which have included improvements to the basketball courts, drainage improvements around the tennis courts, proposed installation of a splash pad, and upgrading the restroom facilities to include family bathrooms. Throughout the last couple of years, we've been successful in securing $450,000 in grant funding through both Chester County and Pennsylvania Department of Natural Resources, of Conservation and Natural Resources. And then there's a third application that we submitted in 2024 for the latter two items specifically, but that unfortunately was not funded, but the plan is to submit another application later this year. But all four projects were included in the two applications that I mentioned earlier. The proposal outlines a non-perceivable fee of $26,700. And we're doing the 2025 budget. This component is allocated for $151,530, including engineering and construction. There was recently a question raised about proceeding forward with the bathroom upgrade. And since all four components were included in the grant applications that were awarded, I did contact those granting agencies to determine what the impact would be. As it relates to DCNR, the funding could be reallocated. With Chester County, they would reduce the amount, the amount awarded proportionately, which would be 27%. So $22,595 would be deducted from the $250,000 that were awarded. I did speak with our partner recreation director, Ken Lear, about this, and he outlined about several reasons to proceed forward with the project, noting, noting accommodation issues. It can serve families with infants and or small children effectively, conserve overflow if the bathrooms have lines, create privacy, and the current restroom facilities are 30 years old and upgrading them intends to provide enhanced air circulation and bringing them up to date. So in reviewing the submitted applications, many of these factors were cited as rationale for the components of the project. But I'll note that the major component related to the existing restrooms is related to ventilation and the primary desires to provide for family bathrooms, which currently don't exist at these facilities.
Right.
Family bathroom?
Yes.
Yes, it's an addition of a family bathroom. That's the essence of this particular phase of the community park improvement project.
That's correct.
And as part of it, we're just gonna, I don't see it in Carroll's scope of service, but they will, the intention is for them to look at the ventilation and the temperature control within the existing bathrooms, but not, we're not talking about changing out fixtures to bring them up to date, just up to date in terms of the airflow.
That's my understanding. And I did speak with Chris and he said that would be easy to incorporate into what they're proposing.
So I guess we, couldn't we just add the family bathrooms to the existing, or one family bathroom, two, whatever's required to the existing and do the ventilation and keep the existing bathrooms where they are?
You are keeping the existing bathrooms.
Very hard. Could you pull up the sketch of the location? So I'm not, I don't quite understand why they put in a family bathroom relative to the two existing ones.
What do you mean, two existing?
The existing bathrooms.
Right, but they're not family.
No, but they exist and we're gonna add a family bathroom to it, like a new add-on.
Right.
Third bathroom.
I got it.
But I don't know where it's gonna be, so.
Give me a second.
Okay. And just while Brian's pulling that up, Chris and you go to, this is our standard terms and conditions with Carroll, correct? Okay. And Chris, just remind me, we, our engineer recommended moving forward with this phase. It's not increasing the cost overall to us of all the phases. He believes that this can be managed separately from the next phase of splash pad without increasing the overall cost, correct?
That's my understanding of that.
If they do put, we do put a third bathroom or a family bathroom, would they be able to do it in such a way to accommodate future expansion, namely for the splash pad, namely having plumbing available to be tied into when we get to that point?
That's a, I can't answer that question.
Like the plumbing. Can you read back, Tom? Can you understand?
No, I kind of spent, Brian, just go to the cloud view of the existing facility and show me. But there you go. Tell me whether the family bathroom.
Yeah, exactly.
I can't tell because the way the PDF came through is how it shows.
Yeah, fortunately, I can't tell.
The, the way this PDF went through, it's got, everything's.
Because the.
That is the stage or that's the stage?
Stage is to the left.
That's the stage?
That's the stage, yeah.
And the bathrooms are one, two?
They're kind of.
Yes, right there. There's a pavilion. That square is the pavilion.
Back here.
So that, those gray boxes are the bathrooms?
Yeah, I believe that's where.
Yeah, so where's the family bathroom?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the question. Now, it says it's going to be structured as an extension of the existing amphitheater. Any way I could see happening would be in the pavilion area right here.
Between the two.
Well, that's, that cuts into the.
The back.
Yeah, just the.
Yeah, I don't know where, I can't tell in here where he's proposing it, because the way the PDF came through is. This computer, what was it?
About the button on the left.
Right there. Family bathroom is one bathroom, one bathroom.
Yes, it's just a larger bathroom with one sink and one toilet. But I can't tell when this PDF definitions are.
It's called there, oh Brian, it's where we were when the other one was. I wonder if it says square on the block.
Right here.
Yeah, right there.
I don't know.
No. Or is that an extension of the existing something?
We've got an extended roof closet.
I don't think we've figured it out tonight. So, but is it a barrier to, let's move forward with what we need to do. I don't, I'm curious, but it's, you know. So what questions do the board have relative to the scope of work proposed by Carroll Engineering?
Do we have any idea what time of the year this would be done?
Their goal would probably be to do the construction after the summer camp season.
And the idea, how long it would take?
I don't know. I can't answer that question.
So I can tell you from looking at the paper copy, I can't tell because I've never been to either of the bathrooms. But this is the existing door into one of the bathrooms. And then they would add, so this is the door they would build this vestibule and you would come off this side. And I don't know which bathroom that is, which court, which, how these bathrooms in the current layout are entered, because I've never been in either of them or been there to use it in the restroom facility. So I don't know if this is the men from the laser or the back door to the, to the stage.
So you're saying they would put, they would invest in the vestibule or one of the.
No, so this, where my cursor is, sorry. This is an existing doorway right here. This is an existing wall, outside wall. This is a door that opens out. I'm assuming this opens as out of one of the existing restrooms.
And that's probably the women's restroom.
On the left is the women's gym.
Okay, and then right here is a new door. This, what you see is outlined in the hatch pattern is new wall. And here's your new, here's your new bathroom. Here's your sink. Here's your toilet. And here's that bathroom.
Where, where's the entrance to that new bathroom?
Right here.
So you have to go.
Have to go through.
No, it's open here.
This is, this is the open area now to access.
So you go left to go into.
Women's room, you go right, here's the, here's the bathroom. But my guess is that's how through there. If that's how this is, if it's on the side of the women's, I can't, I don't know the layout enough. But that's kind of what it appears to be to me, is that they're looking at a door, I can see it. Facing south. So is the women's room on the south side of the park?
I don't know. Can I figure where the sun's at?
Well, on this plan, south is this way.
Yes.
So is this, so, yes. So that's going to be a jake opposite to the door. If you go in, you go left, the women's go right into the bathroom. So that's where it is. And they put it here because they can probably tie in the formants in the women's room there.
Okay, other questions on the scope?
No, but are they handicapped accessible now?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so.
All of them are up to code.
I believe so. We had a, I had a conversation with Chris about that and that was another small thing that he said that could be added to evaluate it. But my understanding is they are accessible now, maybe not up to the most current standards, but that's part of the goal. Yes.
They're constantly changing, so you can comply or not comply.
Other questions on the scope? Okay, so we're looking for a board member to make a motion to approve the professional services proposal from Carroll, the upgrade to the addition of the family restroom and the, as discussed, upgrades to the existing restroom. So John made the motion. In a second, is there any questions from the board on it? Do we, we don't need to add anything to the scope relative to these comments that you've talked to Chris about, correct?
I don't believe so. What I talked to Chris about is if this has to be amended, we'll revise this report and bring it back to the board if it has to be a public scheme.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion. Is there any public comments or questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing null, motion passes five zero. Okay, agenda item number eight is discussion and possible approval for a professional services proposal from Land Studies, the stream feasibility studies at two sites in West Ocean Township, Goose Creek and Barker Park. And I believe Brian is on for this agenda item. I can't find it yet. Brian, over to you.
Yes, good evening. So a little bit of background on where we've got to today. So last year, we had discussed some potential projects in our PRP. One was the Barker Park Stream Bank Restoration and one was the stream restoration for Goose Creek behind Yalde. They are both currently in our PRP. The, we have, they were both listed as potential secondary VMPs. Goose Creek is listed as 103,500 pounds reduction and West Townway were 51,750. We had put out proposals last year, sorry, received proposals from HRG and Carroll Engineering last year to do the work for those projects. We selected Carroll based upon the scope and the scoping and the pricing, having Carroll do the due diligence of the projects and meet and walk the sites with Chris Peterson. We encountered wetlands along those streams. Southeast region has a policy that you cannot impact wetlands for MS4 projects. So at that time, it's brought back to you and those projects were put on hold. So we never closed them. We just put them on hold. November of last year, the Chester County Engineers, which is a organization I belong to, had a presentation, actually was here in this room, from Land Studies. That presentation was about Kiva Flats, which for those of you who, I closed it. Kiva Flats is the new apartment complex that was built on Lincoln Highway in West Westland Township, next to the Cardo Ship and across from Boy Scout, new Boy Scout facility. As part of that project, the developer engaged Land Studies to do a floodplain restoration. So they came and presented to CCE, which is Chester County Engineers, which is engineering firms that do work in Chester County, those years of presence in Chester County, they came and presented, this is part of the presentation of where it is. So what they were looking to do for the project was to restore the stream, floodplain, manage all the post-construction stormwater for the site, which is additional on top of what we're looking for, and also provide load reductions. So the site is located, I said, right here on Lincoln Highway. This is a little bit of a blow up. They have, this is the area of the stream that was going through. Here's two of the buildings. Here's two of the buildings and here's the third. There's, there's five buildings currently there. I think the sixth is under construction right here right now. But I believe there's another building proposed along the road in the back, which I forgot the name. It scares me now.
Warwood.
This is Warwood and then this is the Cardo Ship right here. Boy Scouts is over here. So they were going to do this floodplain restoration and reconnection project on this piece of the tributary to the Valley Creek. They looked at some pre-construction conditions. I cut this way down. There was a lot of impairment, a lot of sediment. There was, one of the biggest issues they had was the constraints going under the road under Lincoln Highway. They did a conceptual design, which is what this is for. For us is to get a concept design, which gets us some information and what they're thinking about doing, where the concept. This was when Hankin had presented to, as their concept of what it would be where they, this is the area of the project, another rendering of the project, and this is what they were able to achieve. So they were able to achieve a 51,000 pound reduction and they also made 5 pounds of hydrogen, which we don't have in ours, but we do have a phosphorus requirement to reduce to 36 pounds per year. So they could get 77 pounds out of this. So I asked Chris Peterson to coordinate with Land Studies about to see if either our Goose Creek or Barker Park would be a potential project. We met with them. They looked at the projects. They said, yes, they are potential candidates. I wanted to make sure they would work. So Land Studies has gotten 15 of these projects approved through Central Office, which is Hattler's Mark. Southeast region won't accept it, but Central Office will. So this project in Exton has been accepted by Central Office, plus there's a bunch of others. So Southeast region is not as advanced in understanding of this as Central Office or Southeast region because of dealing with, dealing with the Chesapeake Bay watershed. This is a big thing I did because the Chesapeake Bay has a lot more reduction departments than what we had out in the eastern part. So Southeast region is like, don't touch, don't touch wetlands where Central says you can touch wetlands because you're rebuilding and they're making it better. So Southeast region is like, don't touch, don't touch wetlands where Central says you can touch wetlands because you're rebuilding and they're making it better.
So who will oversee our application in the southeast region, or how do we get it assessed reviewed by the?
So lands, because of the, because of the relationship land studies has developed with the P and land sites, with the aim of getting it approved by. That would be a question you could ask after, when they come, as part of this process, this is for them to present to you their conceptual.
Okay.
So what's in front of you tonight is a proposal to do a feasibility study and a conceptual design on each of the two parcels. To see how much we can, what we can achieve there on this floor, and what kind of project would be and what potential costs. And then from there, you can make a informed decision if you'd like to move forward with that.
Mr. John's question to be answered first.
I was going to pick on the spot right now. We, for me to want to vote yes for approving this, I would want to know for sure that we could get an approved project to West White Lands.
I don't understand how, we're located in southeastern part of the state, but how is it that the central part?
Well, the central office is the same, is the central office. It's the main office of DEP in Harrisburg. It's not a regional office. It's the main office. They're the ones that say you can do this. So they've approved this, and it's in the MS4 of West White Lands.
So did West Whiteland apply to the southeast region, be told no, and then escalated to head office? How did they get approval?
The land studies handled that.
It's okay.
We have to find the answer to that. We can easily find that out.
Yes.
We've already said that the central office already approved this?
Not ours. They did, they did this project in West Whiteland, at Kiva Flats.
I feel like the land studies is doing something in London Road as well.
Probably, probably.
So I feel, and that also would be southeast, so there must be a mechanism that they can do that. So, but we do need to get the specifics for the board.
Yeah, I can, land studies is willing to get us, and they have one in here that was in Chexford. That's all they have. So on their list.
So if they, if ultimately, if they're going to deny, if you ultimately approve land studies going forward, one of the deliverables from this scope of work is to identify through their modeling the pounds per year of sediment phosphorus reduction. Correct? They will deliver that as part of this.
They, they deliver that.
But will they, will that be guaranteed to be one the state will approve? Is their modeling acceptable to the state?
I can find that out.
And would there be a guarantee that what they calculate as part of this work would be, if not accepted, that we get a refund on that cost or something?
We wouldn't move forward with the engineering project unless the DEP accepted the conceptual project.
Yeah.
So like, that's what happened with Basin Road, the other ones. We had a concept.
Yeah.
And then went to DEP, Southeast region, and they said they rejected it.
But they do?
These will go right to Central Office instead.
Okay. But the work we've done where we've got approved sediment reductions today, that's been based on the projects that HRG did the analysis and calculation.
HRG did a conceptual design, conceptual analysis. When you get to the engine design, construct it, you have to do a certification at the end of the project.
Has it ever been different between what the concept was and what we ended up?
We don't, I can't speak to that because the only ones that are construction are the ones that I have now. I can't speak to previous projects. Because, so if you go back to our list here. So IO wild was done before I started, and that's the number that was put into the plan before I started. Pine Valley was done before I started. This number is what they estimated, based on Carroll Engineering's design, they estimated a larger reduction. But through the process, what it's done and has built, it then will be a final report.
So Carroll Engineering had a bigger number than that?
Had the bigger than that based on their design, but until it's final, this is a, this number was in the report, but we, we got a report from HRG that is thirty thousand pounds, and it's three thousand on here, so I have to rectify that with them to see what number that is. And then from there, that's all we have on this list. So.
So to answer my question really, whatever, if they do have a scope and deliver some number, it, it should be order of magnitude, correct? But the actual detail of what we would end up with is would be further on?
It's a very similar order of magnitude to a stream restoration. So if we were estimating a hundred and three thousand, we're going to be in a similar order of magnitude, maybe ninety thousand, maybe a hundred and five thousand, maybe a hundred and ten thousand. It depends on the order of magnitude when they get to the actual design. It's going to be very similar. So.
So at a thirty thousand foot level, we got stymied with two of our major projects because of wetlands. We think we have found a way forward to move ahead potentially with projects that we initially identified as part of our overall permit for PRP reductions.
Yes.
And we would basically, if this was approved, be confirming that through spending seventy thousand dollars, getting a concept plan, getting estimates of what pollutants could be removed and be ready for potential project or grant applications based on that information.
And at that point, before we go forward, after the feasibility study, we would make sure we get the sign-offs from Central Office to approve the concepts of the project before we go any further. Last thing I want to mention is Goose Creek Alliance put out that they have their watershed plan. One of the things they have in their plan is a floodplain restoration for the head, headwork for the Goose Creek, which is our project.
Okay.
So it aligns with what they have in their plan as well.
So I mentioned.
Have they been contacted?
All they, all I got is an email from them, when did we get that? January, December?
Yeah.
More, more fishing to come, and it came out like two weeks ago, and they, they're showing a floodplain restoration project conceptually up on our parcel.
And we met with the John?
Done, Mike Dunn.
Yeah. So one of the barrier, sorry.
I was just saying that was like all over a year ago.
So one of the barriers attached to the Goose Creek one is the fact that we have groundwater contamination plume under that property from adjacent, from metallurgical work that was being done over on Turnaway, and business went out, went out of business there years ago. It's a TCE contaminated plume under that property. So I don't know what level of earth disturbance would be needed to execute the design. But that is potentially the problem. Because if we disturb that plume, then the responsible party for that pollution will broil us in. You're going to pay for any cleanup, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got to be very careful there.
I know from what they did at Kiva, they're just, they basically, they clean out the legacy sediment and reestablishable distribution they've done. That's the biggest part of this.
Well, does that mean we need to do, we would need to do like testing?
Yeah, they, they.
Or even have far down the groundwater, it's just contaminated, maybe six feet down, and we can do a project that doesn't impact it.
Part of their, I don't, it's not part of this, but when they get into the design work, they do subsurface drilling and testing and everything for their soil struggle.
But they do drilling?
Are we talking about both of these sites right now?
Just one.
No, just.
Oh yeah, we are for the scope.
We started last night on both sites. So we want to get those answers before we move over as well.
Right. I'm kind of, if I put my land studies hat on, they, how do they know what they're going to do until they do their work and say, this is what our conceptual plan would be? It's, you know, two, three feet of earth disturbance is.
Yeah, but if we come in with the information, because we've had testing done, at least we can say, here, here's the pipeline, because this is the state of the land as it is right now.
So I think, so maybe, maybe what we should do, Brian, is you should access the EPA's report for that super fun cleanup. Share it with.
There's two.
Land, with land studies and say, do you see this as an impediment to be unable to execute this project in its entirety?
On Goose Creek.
On Goose Creek.
Well, there's the two. One that was upgraded and the other one's a gas station.
Gas station. I remember the one that we were most concerned about was. The TCE.
And that's a sink, or you can't clean that up. That's a problem. All you're doing is recontaminating.
I will pass up the issue.
So that would be an action, and then, what was the other one related to make sure we had a definitive?
From Central.
Yeah, how do you, how do you make sure that this would be approved by Central Office and not stymied by southeast region? If you get, answer the question, I mean, we should, if you bring it back, we can take another look at it. And also, Kristen, would you mind taking a look at, they proposed that in terms of conditions?
I looked at them, and they changed three of them.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Brian, is, or is that a direction for you? Do you need to?
I will, the last, the last sentence of the third barrier says, for added assurance, land studies have to provide attachment, to properly contact the DEP Central Office. So they have the contacts. They'll just get it, they'll be moving it off and talk to them.
Okay, we just need that assurance.
Just for the layperson, just to leave with all the acronyms on that. PUP stands for?
Complete Reduction Plan.
Now, is this mandated by the state?
No, this is federal. This is EPA.
Now, if we don't do this, what are the possible consequences if we don't meet these requirements?
The only township I know that had, was funded by EPA was Marin Township in Lancaster, Carolina. And anybody down in this area has been fined.
So this is potentially, we all didn't get fined if we don't meet these.
But we have to find other projects, would be your point, right? Okay, if you're not going to do these, we have any to find other projects to get the goals.
The additional benefit of looking at these is they're already, you're PUP, you'll have to redo the plan to add to it.
Now, we're proceeding on a stream restoration project on Warren Road, which is part of the upper part of the basin area. How's that going to fit into this PRP?
That is Basin Road Stream Bank Restoration right here.
So, well, that was the original.
Yeah, it's a little bit less is our estimation of what we're going to get because it's a shorter stream length. So that number's going to come down.
But it's still the.
But it's still in there, but it's just, it's just less of a poundage. So when this plan was prepared years ago by HRG, they looked at, well, based at the time, guidance from DEP, which is changing. Their DEP is also changing the, I was going to say, and then they'll say now, we have a PAI or individual permit. There's also a PAG, which is a general permit. That permit's being currently worked on to do with EPA. So the PAG permit that comes with it operates under, it's a federal permit, that gives, turns me into right and requirements, and that's how, where this all comes from. And we're, we're operating under a complete reduction model, which is pounds and sediment. The new model, which the new permit they're working on just went out for, and just the comment period just closed to the general permit is changing into a volume reduction model. But, yes, they're changing the complete mythology. They've been using it for the last fifteen years. But PAIs, which were under, we're also under a total maximum delimitability of waste load allocation of what we can actually release. So we keep talking about the three hundred and ninety thousand pounds per year. That's the short-term goal. Our long-term goal is actually five hundred and thirty-two thousand pounds of reduction right now. So the next permit cycle, which brings PAIs into, will probably go towards the volume, so we may be able to do more with smaller projects than we can now.
So does, are you saying maybe we should wait to see what that updated guidance is versus spending money on projects that are pound-based reductions?
No, because there also is going to be, they said, at my training, I'm hoping to do another session this year at PSAT. Last year at PSAT, they mentioned this was coming, and they said there'll be a way to convert your projects to.
You've done.
That you've done, to.
Volume-based.
To volume-based. So you don't lose credit for them. You will still have credit, but they had to figure out how that's going to work, which is a conversion.
All right.
So.
So we've beaten this pretty much to death.
So I will come back with, I will, I can come, I can get the additional ratio if you want and come back.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, Kristen. All right, we move on to our reports. Waiting patiently to deliver the police report, Chief Michael Carroll.
Thank you. The report for the police department served in March twenty twenty-five, we responded to two thousand four hundred forty calls per service. Forty-three of those were alarms, and four of those alarms are found to be valid. Seventy accidents, and fifteen of those accidents were reportable accidents. Of the alarms, we responded to two or either the, well, there were seven violations of the highest grade, and then except for those two, the worst was a third violation. There were four third violations. We assisted other departments a total of twenty times for about ten hours, and we were assisted twenty-four times from other departments. We performed extra traffic enforcement on North Three Street, South High Street, Taylor Pike, Snyder Avenue, North Five Points Road, South Foxons Road, Airport Road, Taylor's Hill Road, and Reginald Avenue. Aside from our normal monthly trainings, Officer Cannon attended Friday Tech Point Training. Sergeant Holden attended Hostage Negotiator Seminar with Officers Burnt and Cannon attended Control Legal Survival Training, which is more of a case law training. Officer De Leon attended Care Under Fire Training. Detective Edwards and Officer May attended Leadership and Organizational Success Training. And Captain D'Amidio attended the Internal Affairs Investigations Training. And Department Y, we are continuing with our CPR EVO, which is an every-two-year training department-wide. Besides the report I gave, we just completed our first time back with Skaterama in five years. We had a pretty good result. The first, we had two sessions. The second session was extremely well-attended. The first session was a little bit light. We have our Gomshu Academy coming up this summer, four sessions. Of those four sessions, there's still a couple of spots in the first two, but the second and the third sessions are already filled. And on April twenty-ninth, we have our community meeting here in this building at six o'clock. I'll accept any questions you may.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you about the assistance you provided to, the police department provided to the borough last Sunday with the incident.
So our officers responded immediately as soon as the, or the call come out. They helped with containment, and officers story helped with negotiation, bringing something off the roof, and they haven't given up.
Thanks to the Department of the Officers, Lori.
I have a question. It showed a couple of alarms in Teshar Israel. Is that just accidents or was that, were there any issues?
No, there were no issues.
And how about that voice? One of those bacon?
Yeah, there were, none of those, the valid alarms that were there were only, they were not the full, I don't remember. They were not for burgers.
Want to talk a little bit about the Mustang?
So, yeah, we've been without the, the electric Mustang for at least a month and a half now. We had some mechanical problems that because of, well, because of Ford not being able to give us the parts that are needed to fix it right now. It's been sitting down at Ford for quite a while, and right now, we don't know when it's going to be.
Why can't Ford give you the parts that are needed?
The specific wiring harness that's needed is, they're only making them for new vehicles, so we put in an emergency order to get them to be worn for an old vehicle. But, and we just don't know when they're going to do it.
Can they give you a new, can they loan you a vehicle free of charge while they wait for this mess to get fixed by them?
It wouldn't help. It's a fully marked vehicle with everything inside. A loader vehicle.
So you don't need, it needs to be able to be in service then, right?
It needs to be able in service. I, I mean, if we get to this point in another month, I think we have to maybe talk to Kristen and Stuart, our, what we could do. But I'm hoping we'll get that going.
Okay.
For the April twenty-ninth police community meeting, that's going to be, what, six o'clock here?
That's correct.
And what is the, the theme of this particular?
We're going to talk about community police.
Community police.
Any other questions?
Skaterama was really fun. Thank you too. The Barker Club was really great, Hal.
So anyone here in attendance have any questions for the chief? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we move on to agenda item number ten, Board of Supervists announcements. It's all to my left. Nate?
March twenty-seventh, I attended the PSAT Zoom call in reference to townships with populations of ten thousand or more. March twenty-ninth, participated in the Chester Ridley Crumb Watersheds Clean Up Event, which was a third year for me. It's a lot of fun. Picked up a lot of jump. April first and fifteenth, attended the America Two Fifty meetings with East Ocean Township in preparation for celebration of US two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. April twelfth, attended the West Ocean Township Police Skaterama. April fourth, I'm sorry, they went out of order, attended the Chester County Library System Legislative Breakfast. Our libraries and museums are going to be losing federal funding due to cutbacks. It's important that West Ocean Township do our share in supporting the library system. So many residents, no matter what the political party, take advantage of our libraries. When the time comes for our next budget review, I will press for additional funding. That's it.
Thank you, Nate. Appreciate the update. Tina?
Yeah. April ninth, we had a meeting with myself and Steve Pelna and Ken Holman. We went to J-Tech in Chester Springs to look at emergency blocking equipment, where we had received the fifty thousand dollar grant from Senator Carroll and Camilla. They were very cooperative in working within our budget. We went through a lot of different scenarios of what can work for us. They seem to want to work with us because it's very good marketing for them because of the grant we received. And of course, the senator will be in front of the equipment, take pictures and publicity and so forth. In addition to the fact that we got the PSAT award, which I'll get into next. April tenth, we met with Lynn Cohen, who was from the Red Cross, on collaboration efforts, along with Chris and Ashley were there. We had a very good meeting and opened up a lot of opportunities for the community. On April twelfth, we, again, the Skaterama, which was a great success, and. On April 12th, we, again, the Skaterama, which was a great success and excellent job done. And then today, we had our police meeting. But one of the things I did want to announce was the Fire and EMS Coalition that was started three years ago. We will be receiving an award at PF, PSAT's 2025, for Excellence in Intergovernment Cooperation Award. And that's basically for a couple of things. I just will make a little statement here relative to that. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we are extremely proud of the Fire and EMS Coalition that was initiating three years ago, who receive, who will be receiving the Excellence in Intergovernment Cooperation Award from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, known as PSATs. The purpose of the, of this particular award basically recognizes townships of the second class that work with neighboring municipalities to share services and complete planning and other projects. The award was granted not only for the hard work of obtaining a grant from Senator Carroll and Comida's office in the amount of $50,000 for the emergency blocking equipment, but also for all the initiatives that the coalition has developed, worked on, and completed over the past three years. The collective Fire and EMS Coalition started off with four people and now has evolved over the past three years with a full table of leaders, volunteers, and staff employees to cooperate and collaborate on major issues affecting the entire community, thereby creating an intergovernment culture of cooperation. The Coalition Forum has collaborated on critical funding issues, better communications, and ways of working together, budget transparency, efficiency opportunities, as well as engaging with local and state-elected officials in discussions, grants, help, and generating and executing ideas on improved operational management. The Coalition will continue to work on more initiatives that impact and have similar issues that need intergovernment cooperation along with unity, respect, frequent and over-communication efforts. Some of the members of the Coalition will be receiving the award on May 5th at the PS Conference Convention in Hershey. I just want to say it truly takes a village to build mountains versus hills. And the Coalition has accomplished just that. They will continue to work together as a team. That's all.
Thank you, Tina.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Tina, for pursuing that award from PSATs. Hopefully, the, the rest of the state will look at this as a model for going forward. So thank you for making that.
Ashley?
I think all the events that I attended were covered. I went to the Red Cross meeting, which was really good, and Skaterama was great, so.
Thanks, Ashley. John?
Tuesday, March 25th, I participated in the Green Build webinar concerning collaborative efforts towards carbon neutrality. And on Wednesday, March 26th, I attended a meeting with, along with Tina, a meeting with the staff at the Mountain Treatment Center. It's a local resource for drug and rehab, drug and alcohol rehabilitation. We also took a tour of the facility as well. And on Thursday, March 27th, I attended the West Chester University Seminar on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, as concerned of research projects that are currently going on there at the university. And on Saturday, March 29th, participated in the Chester Ridley Crumb, the CRC Watersheds Association Creek Cleanup behind McDonald's and Montgomery Avenue. And also the West Ocean's Trees Department staff participated in the cleanup as well, and they did a great job. We were there disposing the trash and debris collected by all the volunteers, and we collected 2.7 tons of trash at that event. And on Wednesday, April 20th, attended the retirement party for Donna Messerschmidt. I good luck to her and her future endeavors. And on Thursday, April 3rd, attended the Penn Environmental Geothermal Sustainability Presentation and a tour at the West Chester University along with Sean and the, Sean will speak on that some more. Then on Tuesday, April 8th, attended the Planning Commission Meeting as a Board liaison. And on Saturday, April 12th, participated in the Skaterama, like the other board members have as well. And Tuesday, April 15th, today, attended the Solar Ray Project, the update meeting. The solar panels have been delivered yesterday, and they're being installed as we, you know, today and continuing on. And things are moving forward, so hopefully having a completion date by around May the 15th. Also, I met with the Chief Carroll, along with Tina Schmitt, as part of our Board's monthly liaison meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, John. And just a few brief announcements from myself. The Board met in executive session on 3/21, reviewed the 2025 performance objectives with the township manager. We met in executive session prior to this meeting to review a legal matter regarding Fire and EMS service providers. I attended many of the events that were described, the CRC Creek Cleaner. It was a lot of fun. It was a nice day, too, so it was good to be outside. I did attend the Penn Environmental event that was held on 4/3, and had the opportunity to speak at the university to the small group that was there. My comments related to the future for sol- solar energy and how it's really necessary to look to renewable energy projects to be adopted because it's going to be economically disadvantageous to American businesses and our society if we continue to use expensive fossil fuels going forward. So it's not just about climate change, it's about maintaining American competitiveness from a business sense. And I also attended the meeting this morning on the Solar Ray Project. And they're well along. They're going to put the panels on over the next two weeks, as John said. We expect to get the certificate of permission to operate from PICO mid-May to late May. So all is moving well with that. That concludes my announcements. Chris, I would be you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll try and keep this brief in the interest of the time. Our monthly e-newsletter will be issued, I heard, I heard the yes. The monthly e-newsletter will be issued on April 18th, 2025, in regards to the township's Multimodal Transportation Fund grant for Montgomery Avenue. At the April 1st meeting, the Board approved the professional services proposal from Carroll Engineering for that project. As the Board's aware, we did submit a corresponding application to PennDOT's program in the amount of roughly $750,000. That was done in the fall of 2024. As followed to the meeting, Carroll Engineering had its Office's Grants Team reach out to PennDOT's Multimodal Program for Guidance. And in speaking with them, they're expecting award announcements for that program in August. So since they're still pending, PennDOT has strongly recommended not be giving any work on the project until the township receives confirmation of the award. So as such, we should remain in a holding pattern until we know the results of PennDOT's Multimodal Program, Program Announcement, or else we risk of losing that additional funding that we applied for. I told Chris just to go into a holding pattern because I don't want to run the risk of losing that funding. So it'll just put us four months behind. In terms of our regional stormwater study, we've had two meetings to outline prioritization for those projects. And Brian's been involved in those meetings, and one of the things he recommended was kind of breaking them down into different buckets. So we've had a couple of different meetings to sort of outline what we can do through potential grant applications, what can be completed in-house, and projects that we should begin saving money for to complete. So we're going through that process with the goal of sort of outline things for the budget cycle in 2026. But one thing we did identify is going after a local share account grant for the other phase of North Hills project in the, this fall. So that, that opens up in July. I already talked to Chris Peterson about this, so that opens up in July. Applications are due, I believe, around Thanksgiving. And then that would cover up to $1 million, 100% of the costs. So we'll get a proposal from them, and I think we can use a lot of the information from the regional study to complete the application. So that'll be, that'll actually complete most of Area 9. There are a couple in-house areas that Mark's team is going to evaluate, but that'll complete Area 9 of that, of that stormwater study if we're successful in getting that grant funding.
So can I was going to bring a proposal for our approval to do that work? Do we prepare the grant submission?
I may need, I'm going to talk to Chris further about that because I may just need time and materials from him to like update the budget information and maybe provide any sort of plan information. But I think I can glean a lot of the responses to that application from the study, but I'll know more as we get closer to the application deadline.
So would we want a proposal from Chris, at least for his piece of this, just for the application, just to be, get that moving forward? I'm going to see what's something that March, right?
Let me, the guidelines come out in July, so let me see what the guidelines come out with. If we can use, I don't know if we can use the information that we already have.
If you just get ballpark, so we're going to do our mid-year budget review, we can, because that wasn't planned out by the.
It was not.
Just to identify as potential additional cost issue.
Certainly. With the Rose, speaking of grant projects, with the Rosedale Avenue Sidewalk Project, this afternoon, I heard from the property owner that she does not object to plans. So I did email Kristen to kind of get the ball rolling, and I did talk to Chris Peterson, and he's going to have his survey team get started on that. So we're still a little, we're still kind of in the serp, in the easement phase of everything, but that is moving forward.
Good, good to hear.
And then in terms of our American Rescue Plan Act projects, Fresh Meadows, Snyder Environmental undertook their lining work during the week of March 25th. There's one more run that needs to be completed, but we are waiting, but we're waiting on more material to arrive. They did line, they lined 1,883 feet of pipe, and Mark reviewed the video before and after conditions, and he noted that all the pipe showed significant bottom rust before the lining, but no holes were visible, and he's happy with the final product based on the information that I received from him. And then our Public Works Department will be back in Fresh Meadows in the next two to three weeks to complete additional pipe replacements. And I just, I have to reiterate this. I have never had a project before that's got, has never received a single complaint. They are doing an outstanding job in there.
Just jinxed it, you know that, right, Chris?
Yes, I realize that, Mr. Chairman. And then the government, Brian can talk more about this during his report. The Government Services Center Basin Project is well, is well underway. And I'm not aware of any issues that they've encountered. I know Chris had a pre, he had a pre-landscaping meeting, so Brian will take care of that. And then in terms of our zoning ordinance, comprehensive rewrite, the next meeting for that will be April 21st at 6:00. And then with North Hills, Brian and Mark are going to conduct a site visit with potential bidders on April 22nd. The bids for that will be opened on May 7th, and they will be before the Board for Potential A warding on May 21st. So those are all my announcements for this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone?
Nate just reminded me of something. As it relates to the solar project, we did receive a $5,000 grant from PICO towards our solar energy project. So that was announced last two weeks ago.
Nice.
And I did, I spoke with, we had in the budget to have with them, formerly VVD, assist with the IRA filing, so I did coordinate that with them this week. So they're going to be assisting with us so that we're safe harbor for the IRA funding.
By the way, does anyone here have questions for the Board, Chris, or any of the other people presenting from staff? Please raise your hand, so I'm kind of moving this along, but if you have a question, let us know. Brian, we're on to you, item 12.
So just a couple of stormwater announcements. Government Services Center Basin is well underway. There was a pre-con meeting last Thursday with Carroll Engineering Land Studies regarding the revegetation and vegetation design of the bottom. Land Studies designed that for the basin under Carroll's contract. So they are going to, that was a meeting on Thursday, steps progressing along. And Basin Road, there's a meeting on this Thursday with the property owner to discuss the easements we need for constructing that project. So they're both moving forward. Lastly, Woodlands update. We did get a request from Ray Grauski to convert two basins, some from sediment to permanent. So I'm currently working with Conservation Shift to schedule our field inspection together. Because in the past, since Carroll was on site, they did it for me, but now they're not there every day. So I'm going to do these two, and we do it in conjunction with the Conservation Shift.
So this is a transition from construction, sediment basin to a.
Permanent.
Stormwater.
Yeah, it's two basins converting.
What phase of development that was?
I think one's in five and one might be in six because they want to get rid of those water drip ponds and get some, some lots back. Some of the basins are in lots. They have to convert them in order to create a lot. So I had to, I'm just coordinating with Conservation Shift for a date. Looks like it's going to be the week of the 21st. It's like that week to go out there that week. It's not that week, it's the following week.
Okay.
And then I'll report back here, that if those basins are good, they'll get permission to convert them. So I'm still working through that. I'm still working through the punch list with, the punch list, excuse me, the As-Built Review with Carroll. I asked them two questions last week, and they haven't, haven't figured out the answers yet. So when we get back to the answers, I can get back to the applicant with my final comments.
Okay.
Any other outstanding punch list items, such as the trails or anything like that?
I have not punched them because every time I get, almost every punch, it rains. So, so at this point, first of all, the other will be next week. I'll be on that, that's a date tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, January 14th. So I will be on the other this week.
I guess I was going to use the timeline for dedication. I guess we really can't nail it down with the punch list.
Exactly. I want to kick it back down, but I still, it's still one, still in progress, still in target for this year.
Okay. Brian, a question for you, the aqua work that's needed on West Penn Drive. Can I get an update on whether they're planning to do that?
No, I don't have a date on that. But I'm sure we will, that's something that will be coordinated with the, where the contractor gets the bid.
Yeah.
For time.
Is it, I mean, it's not relying on them. I mean, it should be something they're already scheduling, shouldn't it?
Yes. As far as I know, they're putting it under schedule. I just don't know what it is.
Can we kill my dodge and see if they're, be quiet?
I'll reach out to Chris tomorrow and see what Chris can do.
Good. Thank you.
Just following the impression that Grace did. What's the plan for management of the serpentine balance? Is there anything that we're going to have to do?
So as part of our meeting, we had with the developer, with the township staff, two weeks ago, Chris, three weeks ago, at this point?
About a month ago, actually.
About a month ago, okay. They agreed to coordinate with us a date for the spring and fall to have our crew go out with their experts to see what they do, the spring and the fall maintenance this year. And they have not gotten back to me with a date yet for spring. But they, they've agreed to let us get to a spring and a fall training from them this year.
And I spoke to Mark, and he has, he has a group that he would send out there.
Maybe we could talk to some expert from Natural Lands or something that was.
I think that expert left me. I think that guy left Natural Lands.
Was that Scott Bush?
Scott Bush was theirs.
Oh, okay.
Scott Bush was the guy who did the plan for them. There was a guy at Natural Lands that was, who was the burn expert.
It wasn't, okay, so that's, that's not all. So you, but this current expert that they use, you, we tied it to that, right? Okay. Any other questions, Brian? Shelby?
Just two quick announcements that I'd like to highlight. The first is pertaining to the two additional cases that will be going before the zoning hearing board on Monday, April 28th, in addition to the presentation tonight for 20 Ellis Lane and 1240 East Strasburg Road. The zoning hearing board will also be hearing the following applications. Township has received the request from the Brandon Wyman Valley SPCA for a hearing for the zoning hearing board regarding their property on Phoenixville Pike. As detailed in the letter submitted with their application, the SPCA is simply requesting an 18-month extension to the variance that was previously granted in 2024. The township also received a zoning hearing board request from the property owners of 10 North Concord. The applicants are seeking a variance from the rear yard setback to allow four feet or 30 feet is normally required. This variance is requested to accommodate an extension to their existing dwelling. As noted, these two cases, along with the application for 20 Ellis Lane and 1240 East Strasburg, will be heard before the zoning hearing board on Monday, April 28th at 7:00 p.m. here at the Township Administration Building. Lastly, as we welcome the warmer weather and the longer days of spring, it's also the season where the code enforcement activity increases throughout the township. With the arrival of spring comes fresh growth and a timely reminder of the importance of maintaining properties in accordance with the township ordinances. Staying on top of seasonal upkeep not only enhances the appearance of our community, but also helps prevent potential code violations. That is all I have.
Glad to hear it. Thank you. Any questions? All right, we move on to Agenda Item Number 14, Approval of the Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes on March 19th. March 18th, I await the motion to approve the meeting minutes for a second.
I see.
Are you made, any issues with the content of the meeting minutes?
Yeah, I have one page five. I'll just send it to Chris in an email. It's just some.
Any other comments or questions? Anyone need to add? Again, a public comment. If you guys take the vote, all in favor, say aye. If aye, there's any opposition. Here you are, the motion passes 5-0. Agenda Item Number 15 is Approval of the Treacher Report dated March 31st and the bills to be paid. I await the motion to approve the Treacher Report and the bills to be paid for a second. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board on the bills to be paid or the Treacher Report? Any questions or comments from the board on the bills to be paid or the trace report? Okay, is there any public comment? Let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion passes five zero. I move to adjourn the meeting at nine oh seven through a second.
Sure.
All in favor, would you ever say aye?
Aye.
You are adjourned, thank you.